Good evening, everyone. My name is Mitch Cohen and welcome to the Northborough Select Board meeting of August 28th, 2023. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:02 PM. We are in person for not, I don't know, we've only done a couple of in-person meetings lately, so I don't have any introductory stuff to read about remote meetings. For folks at home, this is a special meeting primarily for the preliminary discussion of board goals. A member, Julianne Hurst, suggested this and we all agreed, so that's going to be the bulk of our meeting. We have one item first, which is to vote on the employment agreement with Michael Gallagher for interim town administrator services. Bob Reed's last day is this Thursday. As we've discussed at prior meetings, we're going to, we've hired, or now we will finally vote on hiring Mike Gallagher after interviewing a couple of people, and he is expected to be in the office for at least part of the day tomorrow. So I think everybody has seen the contract. Does anyone have any questions? Lisa, sure?
Just under the, just to double check, under section one of the, of the timing, it says, "The position of interim town administrator commencing on August 29th and ending upon the hiring of a permanent town administrator."
Yeah.
What would happen if, if seven months down the road, we're just hiring? Would he stay that seventh month?
Well, no.
Because he can only stay for six months.
He can only stay for six.
Right.
Correct. So the, so the charter, the charter doesn't need to be referred to here. The charter is the law of the land of the town of Northborough. So we don't have to call out provisions in the charter in a contract because they are implied to be, to be in force no matter what.
Okay.
The charter specifically says, as we've run into, that we can hire an interim town administrator for a three-month period and then extend it for a second three-month period. So in theory, I, in all likelihood, Mike will be here for more than three months, probably in the four to five month range.
Yeah.
Depending upon how things go.
Okay.
That's my expectation. Sure. Good question. Anybody else have any questions? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to execute the employment agreement with Michael Gallagher for interim town administrator services.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made by Julianne, seconded by Kristen. Any further discussion? We don't even need to do a roll, a call, a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I hear that as unanimous in favor, and we have the actual contract with us tonight. I'm just gonna sign.
Diana will be so happy with us. Will sign it right now.
Oh, yes. You won't have to harass us.
It's also good for us to sign it tonight since he's starting tomorrow.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. So that dispenses with that item, and now the only other item on our agenda is preliminary discussion of board goals. This is an, an open item for us to just discuss. This is for the, for the board to work on goals for itself. This isn't setting goals for the town administrator, but things that we decide that are our goals. Obviously, many of them will become administrator goals in some way, shape, or form. I don't know if this board has ever discussed goals for itself, certainly not in the years that I've been observing or participating in this. I think it's, it's a novel idea. Not that many towns set goals for themselves. But I think it's a, it's an interest, I think it's good that we're doing it. We do have an audience before us tonight of three fantastic representatives from the public, and I will say, we'll, we'll be dealing with this rather informally. If anybody has any comments or questions during the meeting, raise your hand or politely say, "Hey, you," and I'll be happy to recognize you and, and we'll, and we'll go from there. We don't have any public comment agenda items, so we're not going to take comments on things unrelated to our goals. And that's about that. Julianne, do you want to give any, any further introduction?
Well, just to reiterate that, this may be the first time that this board is setting goals, and, and actually, a quick Google search shows that many, that towns are, are, have done this in the past, and I think as we go through this, I hope the public becomes aware that we are listening to you. We're just trying to now to organize how to move forward with, with the ideas you bring to us and problems that you bring to us, and hopefully this will put us on a, on a schedule, a timeline, that will try to get many things done, as, as many as possible. So.
Have you given any thought as to how we should proceed? Should we just go around in a, in a line and each list one item, list everything that we've come to the meeting with?
So maybe we could start with, and, and with, well, I'll start with the subjects that fell into certain categories for me. One was finance, and that would involve things like, maybe a little more education when we talk about tax rate. It would involve things like spending the ARPA money, and at what point, you know, what's our timeline on that? Quarterly reports on tax payments, budgets, that sort of thing. I, I was impressed with Mr. Gallagher's statement that he does a collaborative budget formation, and I thought that would be an interesting thing to, to address. So finance is one. Communication is a big one for me, and that would involve things like, how does the board communicate with the staff through the TA, back, back to the board? Is, is it a, you know, are communication methods efficient? I, and, and another example is I'd like to meet new staff. I'd like to know when people are hired and meet them so that we can establish a partnership. So my third category is ongoing projects, and that would obviously be our White Cliffs, but also MPIC Complete Streets, and, you know, setting some goals for ourselves on that. And then my last, my last category is things I want to learn more about, and hopefully the town would like to learn more about it too. Things like, how do we get electric car charges, chargers, electronic voting at town meeting, that sort of thing. So if, if you're all, so if those four categories, if you think that the goals you've come up with tonight fall into any of them, then maybe we can just write them across the four boards and, or, you know, Lisa, you may have a, a whole different approach.
Well, I like, I like that. I actually did do some research, as I normally do, and I found, as Julianne said, that many towns have been doing this. It's kind of new for us. It's kind of a surprise. It was all, well, I guess we don't have to invent the wheel, we just have to learn to use the wheel. So I did, I made a draft of goals and objectives with the process, values and guiding principles, goals and objectives, and the goals and objectives of what we've just talked about in those categories would be what we would then put in to a document such as this. And I've, I've made a draft for everybody, so I'll pass them down to you, and you can write on them. You can see if there's something that you'd like. I made a copy for Diane for the minutes. And some of what, what I think is kind of interesting is having realized that many towns do this, and they do it yearly. And every time you have new members of the board come into a, the group, they should be able to have almost like a, a manual, so to speak, of what's going on. What projects are in the queue, what projects are done, what projects are going to come, certain problems that have been age-old, how you, how you read the charter, how you understand how to communicate, all that stuff would be really helpful to have so you understand it. I mean, we, Julianne and I went to the MMA and we did our, you know, selectmen, new selectmen seminar. And there's some very good things in this handbook that I wouldn't have known otherwise because I never had a handbook before. It's not like you can go out and take a class if you're going to run for office for these sort of things. You have to do your research. And in some cases, I mean, I think we just probably are the only member who was probably on this, a board before. So it helps for all of us to communicate well with each other when we have a better understanding of, of the path and how to do it. I know I'm a, I'm a person, I don't like GPS. I'm old and I don't like GPS. Give me a roadmap. Let me look at it. Let me look at the whole thing so I can better understand the best way to take it, but not just do something that, well, you're told to do this or you're told to do that. So, so I, I love, I love that we're doing this. It's a very important thing for everybody. It's important for us. It's important for, for the residents. It's important for everybody in, in the municipal world that we, that we live in. I'm just going to read the top process just to give you an idea of what this says, and then, and then I'll let, yeah, I'll let Kristen talk of her things. So it says that, "The Northborough Select Board annually affirms its values and guiding principles to align its goals and objectives for improving government as it interacts with the town administrator, committees, commissions, task force, citizens, and other units of government." Ah, let's see. And so, "Doing the board aims to lead and establish strategic priorities to provide support and guidance and encouragement where appropriate, and to be collaborative, open, and inclusive at all times." The values and guiding principles, we have governance, public health and safety, finance, stability, infrastructure, quality of life, balance and equity, diversity, historic and cultural heritage, agricultural, natural resources, sustainability and resilience, economic resilience, and regional and sales interests." So there's just so much involved in what we're going to start doing tonight, and I hope that it continues in that we can put something together that, that we all feel proud of.
Thanks.
Okay. I didn't bring handouts for everybody. But I, I like Julianne's categories. That makes sense to me, too, and thank you, Lisa, for, you know, because this, this gives us more, more ideas. I did write down more than just a few notes on a napkin. I did spend some time thinking about it begrudgingly, because it is a good idea ultimately. I just, when, when faced with something as giant as what should this like board goals be for the whole town for, even for one year, it just was a little overwhelming. So I just started with a few things that popped into my head, and as Julianne was describing what the categories are, I feel like I can put my things into categories. And I know that I'll get more ideas from listening to other people's ideas. I'm one of those, like, leapfrog on top of somebody else's idea, and that'll give me another idea. But the idea of just, like, all by myself writing all the goals was, it, so I wrote a rough draft. I wrote, like, a half a page rough draft, and that's, that's all I got. And that's actually not the roughest draft. The roughest draft is on the back of information about how to get a student visa application in the UK. So, anyway. So I don't really need to share anything specific till we get going, but anyway, that's, that's how my process was working.
Thanks. So, yeah, I mean, I look at this as, this is a, a first draft process for us. It will take a little while for us to finalize because we'll get them all on a piece of paper tonight, and maybe we'll even think of good ones later. That could happen, too. Then we'll categorize. We'll be doing a good, good draft of categorization, it sounds like already. Then we'll prioritize and start to put some flesh on some of the things that are there. At some point in the next few months, we will have a permanent town administrator that will be on this ride with us.
Right.
And I think it's critical to get their, their input on, on these things. It is our decision to make, but, but getting input from staff is, is important so that we have an idea, primarily resources that are required to get certain things done, and prioritization, budget, any cost of doing these things we need to identify. We can't do that very well totally on our own. So it's a, it's an iterative process. It'll be great, you know, sometime in the next few months to, to get something like this affirmed, and then review annually. You know, we will absolutely, for our permanent town administrator, set goals annually, as every select board should do with its administrator. Probably makes sense at the same time to go through and update our own goals. You know, this is going to be, you know, I have, I don't know, 10, 15 items that I came prepared, that I thought about. There are probably about 50 of them at this table, and there's no way that 50 goals is, is viable to put on, you know, to say, all right, FY24, we're going to do 50 things. We're not, we're not going to be able to. But figure out what, what we're going to do and what order will take a little time, but I think it's good that we're getting started.
I think I do have 50 things on my list.
Okay.
I came in very ambitiously.
All right.
I love.
Maybe 150 things on our list.
I love the categories that, that Julianne had suggested, and I thank Lisa as well for the really nice framework to, to build off of. There were a couple of other categories that came up for me that we can probably add in, but I was thinking infrastructure improvements. I was also thinking environmental stewardship and how that may be. You know, I know that you mentioned electric car chargers, but that, I think, could be a category unto itself. And then the real hot one for me is economic development. I would really like to see more there and more interaction between the community and the businesses. And, and then housing, you know, housing is a big one as well. But otherwise, I'm happy to categorize this, you know, as, as you'd like to see fit, and then we can take that from there.
So are you backing on what you said? So one of my bullet points was sustainability because I think it should be our mission as a town to incorporate sustainability into every decision.
Yep.
Large and small that we make. And sometimes it's going to be something small, like, we're having an event. Let's not provide plastic water bottles. Let's encourage people to bring their own.
Yep.
Sometimes it's going to be something really big, like, can we get an electric vehicle for, you know, the police department, the fire department, whatever. And sometimes, you know, they may not work out, but we, we wanna, that's why I do feel like that needs to be incorporated into everything.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure if it's its own category, or it should be like a special category, or, or we should just try to incorporate it into everything. I'm not, so we'll see how it plays out when we list things, right?
I agree. Yeah. I feel like this could go in a lot of different directions.
Yeah.
And I think it's all good.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the important part tonight is to get as much as possible down on paper and, and not worry too, too much about the detailed categorization right now because we can twist and turn that. And some of these, some of our ideas will fall into multiple categories, so we may end up with kind of like a three-dimensional matrix or, you know, what, categories that include items that, that cross categories. So I, I would say if.
You're gonna have to start writing?
You volunteered to, to be our.
Handwriting?
I am here to help.
Yes, sir.
Could we just step back? I, I feel the, Henry School adding 72 Cresswood Drive. I feel the board is getting into the details. The objective is to have a town that's affordable, secure, provide, provide education for our children. Then you get into these details of the electric car chargers and the thing, but that's your overall objective. Then you get into your goals of how you're going to get there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
I like it.
I've done these before.
Now, we have these post-it note things, and we can, in theory, go to a second page, and these stick on a wall.
Perfect.
If we fill up a page, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Since you're up here, do you, should we start with?
Which category would you like to start with?
I think a lot of us mentioned communication. Want to start with that?
Sure, sure.
This is not going to be easy to read. I'm sorry.
As long as you can read it, that's, works for me.
Sounds good.
And as long as you're willing to retype it, if you.
Yeah.
If you're the only one who can read it.
That sounds good.
Okay.
Okay. So, so for me, I, I would like to see improved communication because there are, I feel like we have our meetings, things are voted on and, and voted on at town meeting, and we don't know the follow-up. We don't know why some projects are not completed as they were scheduled to be completed. So I'm, and I'm, I'm kind of still thinking about what Henry said, that maybe we're jumping into the nitty-gritty too much, but maybe we can do the, the details and then.
Keep in mind what you're, each of these are supposed to be doing, you know? Make a better, a livable town, a secure town. You know, if you think that that's the type of things you're doing, that's fine. But just keep in mind, the overall goal is a, a higher goal.
Uh-huh.
And then you work your details under it.
There's goals, objectives, and strategies, in that order. You, you called the meeting tonight to get the public involved.
Uh-huh.
Right? So rather than start categorizing here right now, you ought to get some input and, from the three of us that are here, and at least, at least have a, have a say. You know, I submitted an outline of, of several action items and goals for you, actually more specific than goals, maybe. I didn't try to categorize. I didn't try to prioritize or rank, but there are some items that are more important than others, and there are items that you could actually complete fairly quickly.
Yeah. If I could, give, maybe give the board a chance to run through a few things and.
You want to.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think it would be helpful for the.
I've given copies to all of you.
Okay.
So that'll help you.
Compile it.
Yeah.
Is it, is it something you emailed to us a while? Is it something you emailed to us a while ago? I don't.
Don't you read your email?
I do, and then I, I sometimes forget them.
What do you mean, you sometimes forget?
Sometimes forget them. I get, I get them. So I.
I did send you one this morning. All of you.
I don't, I don't remember seeing one from you this morning. Did anyone else?
What's your name?
I have it.
Mitch.
[laughing]
Call me.
Okay, yeah.
Northborough.
Yes.
Select Board.
Okay, I apologize. No, I, I.
Don't go on it, Mitch. Let me know. I.
Yeah.
I sent it to the North, to your Northborough Select, thing, all of you.
Okay.
I have it.
Okay. And I apologize if I didn't see.
Kristen did, you did, you did.
Let me see. Yeah, very possible.
I don't know if I saw that one. I'm sorry.
I don't.
I replied right away, didn't I? Like, three minutes later.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got it. I just happened to be on the email when it came through.
Okay. Mitch, I'm sorry if you didn't get it. Anyway, you should have.
Well, this, this is, this is one on there. It says, "Enhance and improve communications."
Okay. Yeah, here we go.
All right, "With residents through public meetings and print and social media platforms, a lack of transparency is, transparency has been an ongoing problem, especially with a former select board and town administrator. Strive to erase this problem. Engage the residents as much as possible in decision-making process."
That's communication. That's part of it.
So, so I think maybe the better thing is, why don't we, why don't we start with communication?
Yeah, yeah. And we can, we can bounce around and things like, and I, and I just checked my email, and I don't have anything from you. So if you could do me a favor and send it again.
You're not on the Select Board.
Someone check the town board, please.
So, so.
Okay, Mitch, I'll, I'll try to send.
Yeah, thanks.
I can even give you a copy.
Okay, great, yeah.
Is the overarching goal here that we, that we have a town that develops good communication between all parties, residents, staff? That's good. What do you think, Ann?
Yeah, that's, that's important.
Okay.
It's important.
And then, under that, I'll offer a few ideas. Follow-up on projects that were voted on at Select Board meetings or other meetings or town, town meeting. So just kind of, you can just write, "Follow-up on projects that were voted on." Introduce and meet new staff. And I, I, I guess the best way to say this is to streamline communication between board, the board and the town administrator and staff. Right now, everything, according to our charter, is all communication has to go to the town administrator, then it goes to the staff, the staff gets back to the town administrator, then it might come back to me, and I have another question, and it just keeps going back and forth. And I was hoping that we could figure out a way to make that more efficient, and hopefully it will help everyone involved. And one more that I would write there is, in getting information out to the, the people in town, I'd like, I, I would like to talk about and find out if we can use the Code Red a little more.
Like a town-wide newsletter?
Well, you know, Code Red, like.
Code red, better.
Sometimes people get, get.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Calls from, like, we get calls from Worcester and the, you know.
The school system uses something like that often, where you get a recorded voice of the school superintendent that says something is going on, or, or school is canceled because of snow, or something like that. Some towns have, I mean, I think we do actually have something like that in place.
Yeah, we have.
Yeah, and, and that part of it doesn't get used except in the case of emergencies.
Right.
Yeah.
Then we haven't used it except.
Right, right.
I know, I, I get, I get communication all the time from out west. They don't, they don't, I live in Northborough. I don't live in North Brookfield. And I keep hearing from the North Brookfield administrator.
You know, to go along with the communication, one of the things that I, I mentioned in, in my outline to you, is that regarding the annual budget and the annual town meeting, it would be really beneficial for the public to have a chance to review the, the warrant, the articles, you know, ahead of time.
Mm-hmm.
Before the meeting. And at least give us a chance to get some input, review an input on them or ask questions. And the other thing with the annual meetings is, I think we need to, we used to have a, a cutoff time, you know, 10 or 11 o'clock, depending on when you start, and, but, you know, to go beyond four hours, four and a half hours is kind of stretching it. And I'd like to see that brought back. I don't know whatever happened to that, but it's a reasonable request, and I, I think it would serve.
Yeah.
Everybody.
Yeah. The bylaws do, do say that town meeting has to end by a particular time, and the way, the way it's written and the way, I, I think our moderator does a good job following it, is, once we hit that threshold, which I think is 10 o'clock PM, that the existing article that is ongoing at that moment continues until it's over, and then the meeting can decide whether they want to continue that night. In absence of, of town meeting deciding to continue that night, it is extended to the next night. It might be 11 o'clock as the deadline. I don't remember.
Well, they go into 12, 12:30.
By doing that, by doing that, Mitch, some people think they're not going to get to. By doing that, Mitch, some people think they're not gonna get to something so they go home. And then the group that's left.
Yeah.
Votes, and I won't mention what project, but it was one o'clock in the morning when we.
Yeah, I don't wanna, I don't wanna go too far off, off track, but I do have town meeting improvements on my list and I, I guess communication is probably an aspect there.
I have, I have one after.
Yeah.
You break that down.
Would be pre-meeting review within a cutoff time.
Yeah, so I'll.
And the other thing, sometimes, you know, when you're having a big, uh, high-priced controversial article, would be nice to have them up front rather than last.
I'm with you.
I tell you.
Yeah, I, I, I'm a fan of, of using special time meetings occasionally for some of those big-ticket items that are gonna generate an hour, hour and a half of debate, let people focus on that. Sometimes it, the timing works out that it's better to have it at the annual.
Like a warehouse over a Douglas.
Mm-hmm.
Do you read that?
I haven't read anything, I know, I know there's a warehouse under construction there, yeah.
They got another, another proposal, controversial, like, you know.
Yeah, I still.
Me and you are from there.
I, I still hear things now and then.
It used to be in East Town.
Yeah. So, um, you mentioned two things, Gibb, that, that are on my list regarding town meeting that I was gonna bring up anyway, I'll bring them up now here, and I apologize if this sidetracks us. Well, the idea is just get everything on the list, it doesn't really matter what order. One is, speaking of my old town, one of the things that we did there that I really liked is I would get together with the town moderator, it doesn't matter, two people to talk about town meeting in advance and, um, to do a little cable show. And that just go through the warrant in an informal way and say, oh, here's Article Four, this is what this does and talk about it a little bit, then go on to Article Five. And it's a little show and it was helpful to, um, particularly for newcomers to town meeting, to get an idea as to what actually is going on beforehand. And, and we would record it two or three weeks before a town meeting and put it on cable and, you know, ten people would watch it, I don't know. Uh, and you could still find them, believe it or not, if you go to, yeah, I'm not gonna tell you where to find it, but before I had a beard and looked a lot younger, um, you could find me talking about town meeting.
The town moderator has authority to appoint some positions, correct?
Yes.
Do you guys, did any, do you have an opportunity to, can, you know?
No, no, it's, the Appropriations Committee and a few other things are solely town moderator.
Town moderator?
Yeah, um, and back to town meeting, talking about town meeting and trying to keep us on, on focus as much as we can, to talk about different ways of maybe streamlining town meeting. Uh, some towns will, so Northborough is very rare in that we don't have a regular fall town meeting. Almost all towns do. Some towns just do it for, uh, financial items that come up to just clean up the prior fiscal year after it's been closed and deal with a couple of things. Some towns will proactively plan for, for example, the fall town meeting or all the zoning-related articles. So, the planning board initiatives and bylaw changes and things like that would be generally scheduled for the fall and all financial matters would be generally scheduled for the spring. A number of towns do that and I think it's not a bad idea to at least talk about doing that. Pros and, pros and cons to it, you know, in, in all ways, shapes, and forms, but I think it's an idea worth discussing. And that one advantage of that is then your annual town meeting gets a little shorter because you are proactively saying, "We're not gonna deal with bylaw changes unless they are critical to deal with right then and there."
Like, I agree with that, I think that's a great idea. Of, uh, having two meetings a year, um, especially if you need something else.
Yeah.
But the two meetings make far more sense because now you have two different opportunities to come. It's not going to go into the early part of the morning and, um, and you have more time to look at things. So you have more time just to stick with finances, or more time to understand what the zoning changes or whatever is happening because that zoning involves everything, planning, um, what we do down the road, um, and it's, it shouldn't, it, it kind of gets a second, it goes on the second burner because finances are so important in the first town meeting or in the spring town meeting. So if you at least do both in different times, the focus can be as it belongs. And, um, and I'm wholeheartedly in favor of that.
I think, the fall, I think is a better idea because you have two new selectmen, select person that comes on board
Mm-hmm.
just after the, the town meeting.
Right.
And they have no clue what's going on.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe.
Mm-hmm.
So if you had in the fall, at least they have a couple of months to get adjusted.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Uh, and it's another opportunity for members of the public to, to come to a town meeting and see what it's all about and hopefully get really excited about the next one. Henry?
Somebody mentioned electronic voting.
Yeah.
I think that would streamline it. It also takes away the pressure of the person sitting beside you, how you vote.
Mm-hmm.
Which I see a lot, okay? And it would, I bet it would chop an hour off of a town meeting because you're not going around counting and everything. It's, it's pretty efficient and it's more accurate, I think.
Yeah, and more, more and more towns are, are doing that.
I, I don't know what it would cost, but I think it'd be well worth the amount that we would have to pay for it.
Yeah, yeah.
Did you say electronic voting?
Yeah, electronic voting, yeah.
Select meeting, yeah.
I think we're all, I think we're all agreeing with that.
I have one more communication idea. That's been on my mental list for a while. Some towns send out, uh, town administrators newsletter, monthly. And, um, I was reading one, uh, recently at a relative's house and it was really interesting, because I understand so much more about how towns work now that I've been doing this for a couple of years. But also, it was written in a really user-friendly way, it was, it was organized by category, it had a few pictures to share, and it was on paper and it was mailed to people's houses, so, um, that might be expensive, you could probably also opt to get a, you know, an, a PDF in your inbox. But I feel like there are plenty of people who like the paper version of things too, so I don't know how much that would cost, but it did seem like a, a really nice idea.
Yeah, something like that was on my list too. One, one of the items that I had is, we should appoint someone as a communications director. Does not need to be someone's full-time job. More and more towns are doing that though. Um, Westborough has a part-time, I don't know if they call it communications director, but a communications person that works in the administration office, and it's somebody that has another title or two also. And that's somebody to create a periodic newsletter to the town of important updates that everyone should be aware of in a user-friendly fashion. Someone to, you know, keep an eye on social media, to not deal with every little thing that people say, but if there's something factual you can direct them to, someone says, hey, does anyone know where this is or what's going on with this project? Someone with an official title can say, "The official information on this project is at this link." And, uh, and here's the link to the latest video of the latest meeting.
That's a very good idea, Mitch.
Yeah.
I mean, we got the White Cliffs, we have a fire station, uh, you know, many people wanna know projects and then you hear rumors and rumors. So if you've got it officially.
Yeah.
You know, it would be, I think, much better.
Yeah, it's not, not an easy job and somebody needs to have just that fine line of not getting in the middle of the controversy but providing the dry, boring answers.
Where is such and such a project, okay?
Yeah. Um, yeah.
I'd like to see, I'm on the Earthworks Board and I'd like to see a flow chart because we have no clue what's going on with the other boards.
Hmm.
Yeah, and you're connected to a lot of other boards.
If we had a flow chart, I used to ask Fred, who's not here anymore.
Mm-hmm.
What's the, what's the conservative, conservation, what's this or that? But that probably's not gonna happen again. So, I think a flow chart would help. Let's know what's going on.
Might be good to, that, you could sort of have like a blog format on the town website, which I think, our, our town website is actually built on a pretty good structure, it might be able to do a lot more than it's doing now without a lot of extra work. So it's possible that, you know, there might be a, a page where everything could go from all of the land use boards. And as projects are updated, you just sort of see, rather than having to look at each individual project under each individual committee, maybe if there's a way that it could all flow up to one central page. I don't, I, I. Yeah, exactly, yeah, projects before.
Sometime last fall, I proposed that to Carrie and to Lori Connors.
Okay.
A flow chart, that anybody could look, you know, this project is at this stage.
Yeah.
This project is at this stage, even the boards, it's like you used to do with your mother and father. Ma says it's okay if it's okay with you.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, the planning board said it was okay. They didn't, they gave them stipulations of what they had to do before they'd say okay.
Yeah.
Right, I like that.
Um, and back to that communication director position, I, I don't, I don't want to know if the library would wanna take this on, but the library has taken on some communication role where, um, they've got an employee now that has taken over running the Northborough Guide project. It is possible that the library could take on that communications role. They might need some extra staffing or some extra hours or something like that, um, to make that happen. I think, you know, in some ways it makes more sense to be out of the central administration office, but the library is the most retail-oriented, um, department of the town. And probably, probably the best writers, absolutely.
So I think, um, to expand on what the gentlemen have said and what Mitch just said, one of the things I was going to suggest, I heard it at one of the trainings a while back, is that some towns, once a year, have a representative from every board, commission, and committee meet together and they all, you know, this is what conservation is doing, this is what Earthworks is doing, and a chance to hear, you know, what they've accomplished, what they wanna accomplish, and then to have, you know, a, a discussion, how can we help each other? So that was one of my, um, one of my things to add to communication and the, the other thing I wanna write on that list is institute hybrid meetings.
Oh, definitely. On that, but I didn't know, what was the title for like the board collaborative meetings, like?
Yeah, just put, uh, committee collaborative meetings, once a year.
So the Select Board does not meet with any other?
We have liaisons. So I go to five or six committees and, and in my report I bring back and say, "This is what they're doing." But, like, I always, I always feel like Cultural Council could, could maybe piggyback off of things that Community Affairs does, or, you know, um, the Diversity and Inclusion Committee and they, I.
Is there no quarterly or, or sub-annually, uh, department heads meeting with the Select Board?
No, that's a great idea.
It, it, they should, I don't know how the hell they, why, why you know.
Well.
You know, you've got the department heads, you guys are in charge of all of those, you, you should be meeting with them.
Yeah, I thi- I think it's a good idea for, for every department to come before the board once a year. Sometimes more, more often, but probably once a year. And give us an update as to what, what they're doing and what's going on and, and, or organize them into categories, related categories.
And so we have a relationship with them to a certain extent.
Yes.
We're not in each other's faces all the time, but.
Right.
They feel comfortable talking to us if they need us.
And I think, I mean, this isn't, again, this is not a reinvention of the wheel. I, I've seen minutes from two thousand and five where meeting, department heads were meeting with the Board of Selectmen, giving them what was going on, what their, what the year's plans were and everything else. It's, um, I'm trying to find it so I can read some of it.
There used to be a lot more give and take in, uh, you know, I've, I've got fifty years here, Henry's got sixty. A lot more than that, uh, but, you know, the old Select Boards used to have a lot more interaction with department heads.
Right.
Yeah.
And, uh, even the public could go in and meet with them and ask questions and they seemed to be more, uh, agreeable to that than they have been, or, over the last thirty years. I don't know what happened.
I think, I think ref- refining the relationship between the, the board and staff is, is important. Um, we haven't really talked about staff particularly there, I mean, one of the things, and it's, I guess it's communication-related in a sense is, is employee retention. That, that's something that I think the board should take more ownership of and part of that is having a, a good and positive relationship with the staff that is still appropriate per the charter, you know.
Staff's gotta understand that, uh, the difference between administration and management.
I would, oh, sorry, I think the other benefit of having, I was thinking more departmental, like, monthly reports or buying a report from the directors and just to understand what their needs are so I feel like we're not so caught off guard at town meeting when suddenly there's a big project that may come up unexpectedly, so just having a little bit more planning time and giving them the ability to really make sure that their needs are, are heard.
Uh-huh, so this was one of the, one of the parts of that, the minutes that I found. It said, "Ms. Hubbard Ward provided a detailed review of the duties and responsibilities of the Treasurer Collector's Office. Due to the continued community growth and the multitude of programs and reporting requirements, she required that she would get, uh, another person for a part-time position just to catch up perhaps with some of those things that had gotten past them." And I think that, I mean, that teamwork is what we've been talking about since we started all of this and I think that's what we're trying to build, is, this is all our, we're her team. We're supposed to be able to work together and for the benefit of the town of Northborough. So I think this is fabulous that we're all doing this and that, um, and that we will, um, you know, some of the things that I put on here is to work to improve citizen communication by creating and implementing a citizens' correspondence policy. Create and continue monthly a regular publication of the town administrator's report. So that, that's all, again, we keep going around the same yes, this is what, what we're all pretty much into.
But department heads have to recognize that they should be coming to you. I see, I see department heads go into the town administrator a lot. I also, I also, uh, see the, uh, public and maybe a select person go into a department head that then runs to the town administrator and complains about their cover tool.
Yeah, I mean, day, day-to-day, the response of, you know, the, the department heads report to the town administrator. But that doesn't mean there can't be a relationship between the department heads and the board. It, it, we need to fi- find a way to make that work a little bit better than it is now.
We have a relationship with you guys.
Yes, yeah, it really, it really is, it really is. And it, we don't oversee day-to-day the departments, we oversee day-to-day the administrator.
Right.
But for us to effectively do our job, we need to have a good understanding of what's going on at offices other than the administrator.
Absolutely.
Now, another thing that I got.
Yeah.
You don't get to talk, you just get to write, that's terrible.
That's fine.
All right, so, another thing I, I thought of is, well, "Provide guidance and resources for all town volunteers serving on boards, committees, and commissions to improve consistency and efficiency of public meetings and hearings. To start an annual training session for those boards, committee members on purpose and responsibility." So, you know, again, new members come on a board, they really aren't given a lot of information. They're not given any manuals or this is what, in the case of the ZBA, this is, this is what a variance is allowed. It's got, it's a three-part, uh, need and you have to complete all three to get a variance. Uh, it's law.
Is there anything in your manual letter about goals, about values, and principles for the Select Board to be found?
Well, there isn't necessarily, but that's what this, that's what this draft that I handed out today was. It is to go through that and to get values and guiding principles and, and have the communication that we're doing tonight and then creating those things for the town of Northborough.
But they're not in there.
They're not specifically in that manual, no. But that, I mean, that doesn't mean that, and I mean, every town that I've checked already had it. So, it's just that I think we've, we kind of, you know, we're, we're different, we're different as humans.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, perhaps a, a, an earlier step than this could be to just create a vision statement and, and a few things, you know, three or four goals or initiatives that are, that are under that vision statement. And then, we're starting off a little bit more in the weeds, but this will help us understand what's going on and if we wanted then, contract some of those things into a vision statement, we could do that once we see the, the details.
I have a question.
I wanna, I wanna let Laura speak up and then, then Henry.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
I was just gonna say, when we're talking about employer retention and director reporting, I would love to review our org chart and just make sure it's efficient and it's.
Yeah, yeah, and that, that's, one, I mean, one of the things elsewhere on my list is, um, is a staffing study essentially. How that gets categorized, I'm not sure, probably finance under, under those, those initiatives, but, um, just because we have a, a pretty flat org structure right now, there are a lot of people that report to the town administrator and if there are ways we can, uh, whether it be consolidate departments or rethink that a little bit.
Yeah.
So that the town administrator doesn't have so many direct reports, I think would help everybody. And that's part, part of what a staffing study will lead us to. Henry?
Do we have procedures for like, uh, when you became a selectman? Can somebody say, "You're gonna have to do this, this." You know when you're supposed to turn in certain reports, when you're supposed to do this? Is there anything in writing?
No.
Why not?
There, there should be, so it's.
We've been a town for two hundred and fifty years or plus, why do we know? Well, I'm just saying.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's interesting, so the, um, I, I've wondered this for a while, so if you get elected to the school committee.
Yeah.
You have, I think, a year to take courses, under the state law, you have to take classes, like, within the next few months after you get elected, um. And I don't know what the ramifications are, essentially you, you can actively participate in school committee if you don't.
Shouldn't you know what you're getting into?
You should, you should, you should, but the, but there's, there shouldn't be a requirement for running. It should be, so that's, I think, why it takes place afterwards. And some other boards have things that you either have to do or, or are expected to be done. In select boards, there isn't anything under state law, partially because the responsibilities vary. We have a particular charter that is, here is the form of government for the town of Northborough.
And what about the financial board, what about the personnel board?
Because they, they fall under the charter, and, and our definition of what all of these boards do varies to Southborough, to Shrewsbury, to Westborough.
The only, the only trouble is that you can, you can watch every, every year that when you have a turnover or, you know, positions that are being, you know, run against. Existing, existing elected officials may say, well, this person hasn't got experience, he's gotta get experience. He doesn't have the training, and we gotta, you know, it takes years of training, yet there's nothing in writing to guide him, there's nothing in training to, to provide him.
Yeah.
And we all come in cold and learn.
Yes.
I mean, I, you know, you, you, you watch, you listen, you read, and you come in and do the best you can and learn along the way.
Yeah.
There are, there are courses in college that, you know, pertain to-
Yeah, and the Mass Municipal Association, which is, you know, this, this book that a couple of members brought with them, is good.
But they use this thing, you gotta circle a thing here of, of saying, well, this person doesn't have experience enough, and then you're not providing any, there's not even an outline of goals.
Yeah.
You know, so, anyway.
Do we have a chart of when, for instance, the finance, the budgets have to be done, and this has to be done, and this has to be done? No, I've heard through the years, I've heard at town administrator, we have to, by this. Do we have a, a written, a written thing that we have to have the finance, the budgets in? We have to?
I, so I, I, there are certain things required under state law in our charter that back up from town meeting. So town meeting is at the end of April. Town meeting, the warrant for town meeting needs to be set either fourteen or thirty days prior. I forget which, which our town falls into. Other than that, I don't think there's anything in the charter or the law. Typically, the town administrator will set rules for when department heads need to get their requested budget to the town, and we're, we're gonna be into that season very, very soon.
Right.
So that's gonna be starting the next couple of months. Where this board, I think, could and should get involved is to start to expect more detailed budget status during that cycle, and most towns get that. That is one thing that this past budget season, was my first budget season sitting on this board, and it was very frustrating to me to not see budget as it went along and new positions as it, as, that were under consideration by the administrator. Ultimately, we respond to the administrator's suggestions, and then we say yay or nay to those. But the board should be more involved in that process than, than we were this past year. And I think, you know, for myself, my frustration hit its peak when the meeting that we had to vote on the budget, there was a major new position added at that, at that request. And I think I let it be said that this will not be happening in the future, because that's not the way to do it. That should be, you know, we should probably get a, the first draft budget in some level of detail, no, certainly no later than January first. I mean, the, the prior town administrator gave a, a financial report in the December timeframe every year, the, the financial trend monitoring report. I don't know whether that will continue in the future or not, that's up to whoever is, is sitting in the office next door. But that's not really a draft budget, that's fifty thousand foot view.
When these, when these draft budgets first come out, shouldn't the select board, as well as the finance, be kind of looking at this together and deciding on whether this expenditure is warranted or justified? Or if you asked for this certain amount of equipment here a year ago, why are you asking for the same amount of equipment and a million dollars for more?
Yeah.
You know, stuff this year, and why isn't, why doesn't the finance board kind of ask the question, what is this costing the town taxpayer, how is this gonna impact the taxes?
So I'm not gonna try to answer what the appropriations committee does or doesn't do. That's, that's a question for them, they're a separate board appointed by the moderator.
You'd like to answer what the appropriations should do.
I, I think, I think, I think they, they play a critical role, and we play a different critical role. Ours is more, ours is more policy, but they, absolutely, absolutely, it's a mesh.
It's a mesh.
Yes.
If, if you're saying no, and they haven't reviewed it, or if they have reviewed it and come up with a question on, well, I don't think this expenditure is legitimate, you shouldn't be overriding that and saying, well, we're gonna approve it anyway.
Mm-hmm.
Or at least that's the way I think.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, the budget that, that gets presented is the board's budget, and it has to be reviewed by the appropriations committee. We're the policy board.
After you have given a-
Yes, so we, in theory, we approve the budget that is presented to us at or around the public hearing that takes place a month or so before town meeting. And we, but we can, you know, it is our budget, so we can say yay or nay on any line item if we want to get into the level of weeds.
Finance and appropriations, that kind of weigh in?
Oh, absolutely. So they, they meet very frequently from late December, early January, right through April. Particularly appropriations, which is this year's budget, financial planning is more capital, is the capital improvement committee is what most towns would call that, that feature. And where I, where I see this board being more involved with the budget or having its focus regarding the budget are new and changed initiatives. You know, the, the town administrator says we should, you know, add another police officer or DPW person, or change a department, or something like that. I think we should have a, a key role in that at the very beginning.
Can I just, was it the, the facilities manager?
Yeah.
That he added that?
No, that was, this past year was, was the deputy fire chief. And it was good justification for it, but it came to us at the meeting that we had to vote on the budget anyway. Not, I, I was, yeah, not, not the way it should be done.
And I do, I do think that even at the finance committee, they were, they were surprised.
Yes.
Because I attended that.
Mm-hmm, yeah, no, I watched the video of that one, yeah.
And, and I think, I mean, I think what we're all agreeing to at this point is that we are more interested in, in knowing more and understanding more, and not having just a presentation to say yes to.
Yeah.
We, you know, we obviously wanna be able to communicate, again, we're back into the communication, so that we're learning more, because we're being told more things, and then that we have a better understanding of the whole picture, right? Because that's really, we're the whole picture.
Right, right, we're the, we're the big picture room.
And, and when it comes to appropriations and finance, that I've, I'm like my, you know, people in the audience here today, I've attended many of those meetings, but there's just a couple of us that attend those. That people should be able to come and ask questions at those meetings, and they should be all like we do, making them public, so that if you wanna go to that meeting and you wanna ask a question, that you should be entitled to do that and, and, you know, have an answer. Because ultimately, you're the taxpayer. And, and they're overviewing what a budget might be, or what they're accepting from different department heads. And you have every right to ask questions, even at that point, not wait until town meeting.
In the outline that I provided you, one of the things of priority, I'll, I'll give this one a priority, the things that really need attention and changing is our economic strategy and direction. And, you know, in the time I've been here, more so in the last thirty years, we used to have a pretty frugal town for the selectmen and, and the town, town administrator here for, I think, up until probably the mid-nineties or whatever, but what I've seen here over the last twenty, thirty-five years is that we have been just putting out a budget, all expenditures, with no consideration or concern for the impact that tax pay. I've heard at meetings that if we don't have enough money, if we don't get enough money from the state, we'll raise taxes. That was the town administrator that said that. I've heard at meetings where planning and others have come in, well, you know, where a guy, a developer is trying to put out plans for, for housing, and he wants to build four to six homes. He's got three or four different scenarios, I'll build four homes here and provide you, I'll give you land along the river here, while land's no good to the town. You know, because just, just plain raw land's no good to the town, unless it's developed, we can't get revenue off it. Well, there's, I, I don't know if you've been in agriculture or natural resource management, but, or even if you're in a real estate brokerage, you know damn well that land that's set off and protected and, you know, can carry a, a pretty good value to a lot of people if they wanna buy a home. We need to turn this all around, we're spending more than, and, and extracting more from the taxpayer, then the, then the money can, then, then we have money. We, we just can't keep doing, can't keep doing. And, you know, you've gotta look around at more of a steady-state economics. Not, not, we're not stopping growth, it's just gonna be slow and more balanced. It's not a new concept, though we've known this for a couple of hundred years or more, but we just don't follow it. It's like climate change, it, it's not there that we have to shovel out or, you know, dry out the basement. But anyway, that, that is one of the things that this town, and all the towns are struggling with this. A lot of them are ahead of us, but we need to look at that and change it. And that reflects on the budget, on how we're gonna prepare a budget.
Yeah, I mean, one, you know, just, just without going into too many details on that, one, one thing that Northborough has that is both a luxury and a curse is we have a significant amount of money above the levy limit. Or we are significantly below the levy limit and above the, what we receive in taxes right now. So it is, from a practical sense, it is easy to say, oh, you want another position? You know, you wanna add this, you wanna make, make this more expensive? That's fine, we'll just raise it in taxes because we can. And not saying it's a good idea, but, but the balance, we're not, that balance is not forced upon us. Most towns in Massachusetts are at the levy limit, so they raise taxes two and a half percent a year because you can't do anything more unless you do an override, which is a whole big to-do.
Organize, downsize, or look at what you're spending the money on. There's certainly, last year's budget, and you heard me get up at the meeting and complain about the DPW and the, and the three new trucks, almost a million bucks. And with, with plows and, and spreaders that was, you go up there, I, I had the number and I, I got asked afterwards, Jim, how do you, how do you know that? Well, I drove up and got out of my car and found it. You know, they're all there, they see.
Mm-hmm.
And if, if, if you get, you know, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for one truck.
Very expensive, yeah.
A hundred and fifty thousand dollars would really up the senior center, you're not asking for a hell of a lot.
Yep.
Mitch, I have a question about that. Is, so you know how you can hire like Collins or something to do a staffing study?
Yes.
Is there s-
Well, we're contracting outflown and road asphalt building and a lot of other things already.
But my question was gonna be a more general thing, like, like, could you get some kind of expert in to look at how we spend money and is it, is it the most efficient?
There are consultants out there for everything.
Wait.
But then you're spending a hundred and fifty thousand on a consultant.
We're trying to move around with consultants and committees.
I, I, I agree, but, but I think that, you know, it's like, why, why are financial planners helpful? Because they, they take a more objective look at your, you know, at your financial situation. And, I, I mean, look, we're just, we're not talking about doing anything tonight, we're talking about ideas. And, and I, you know, maybe Jason Little could do that.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, no, I'm not suggesting this, but in theory, the board could do something like, direct the town administrator to give us a level, level funded budget. Something like that, that, not a level service budget, but a level funded budget, and they would then be forced to develop the best budget they could without raising a dime in taxes. I don't think that is really a good idea, but that's an option before us. You know, we, we could, and it's a whole lot of work. I, I've been, you know, I, I've seen environments where that was absolutely required because there was no other option, because you were at the levy limit of two and a half, and you weren't getting any new state aid, and, you know, you, you saw what the dollar figure was, and that's gonna be your budget. And, because then it becomes, okay, what positions do we cut? Sometimes there are some small savings that you can find by saying, oh, okay, you know, this department is ordering, you know, a hundred reams of paper, and this department is ordering a hundred reams of paper. Maybe if we put, put them together, I'm not saying those aren't done. Chances are those things are being done right now, because those are pretty easy to find. But sometimes you can go through and do that. One of the things, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna sidetrack into finance for a second, but it's, but it's here.
Start a financing, but before we leave communication, does anybody feel that exit interviews, when any of our staff leave, would be beneficial?
I think so.
I think-
Especially in the early, in the early beginning, I mean,
Yeah.
because we're starting from scratch, so to speak.
Yeah.
We're setting all these goals, we're setting out objectives.
Yeah, it's, it's a-
We have lost a lot of people.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, retention, as I said, I brought that up.
Okay.
So that's, it's an interesting question, because in an exit interview, you want and expect a lot of confidential feedback. Feedback that you might not get from an active employee.
Mm-hmm.
We are public, so we can't conduct that type of exit interview. But the, I would fully expect that the town administrator should conduct an exit, exit interview with all or most people on their way out, no matter what the process is. How do we get that, I'm not, I'm not quite sure. I don't, my only, my own opinion is I don't think we should participate in that directly, but maybe we could ask for some kind of a summary. We have access to personnel records, so if there's an exit interview, I would expect that to be written up and put in the person's personnel file. We have legal access to those personnel files, maybe that's a way to do it? What's that?
Did they do that in Douglas?
I don't remember doing exit interviews there, no.
I just, I really think that that should be one of our, one of our goals this year,
Mm-hmm.
is to do that, have, have, have that direction.
Mm-hmm.
That we wanna have, for so many reasons.
Mm-hmm.
It, you know, you may, you may be able to put into a staffing study information packet of why this is happening. Well, we, I mean, some of it, you know, is retirement, so a lot of this is retirement.
Yes, currently, yeah.
And it's just that time of the, you know, the cycle of people leaving to go on retirement or do something different with their lives.
Yeah.
But it also would benefit us to be able to start having things in the queue.
Mm-hmm.
For example, like, the, the police chief has already given us a lengthy, I'm leaving.
Mm-hmm.
And so-
You've been to what?
He's, he's retiring in December.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that means that now we know we should conduct something to get somebody ready.
Yeah.
That he can then give whatever information he's going to, decide whether or not, you know, we, we keep it in-house or go out. Personally, I'm a hire-within type of individual, I think that you've got somebody in place and you find out inside.
Is it appropriate for the chief to give the board a name?
Recommend, I, I would think recommendations would be-
I think it would be appropriate for the board to ask for a recommendation. I don't think, I don't know if it's appropriate for him to proactively give it, but we should ask.
We should ask.
And then he would give it.
And no, and, and prepare for those things, because you don't know. I mean, we're in a society now where if somebody could get in a car accident and there's only one person that's making decisions or know anything, and there it's gone. So that historic information has to be shared, I think. And, and knowing that we have this new turnover, it's time. You know, it's time that, I mean, we've already seen who the deputy fire chief is, right? I met him when we had the, he was sworn in.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's already in the queue, if I'm not mistaken. So the deputy is supposed to come up to the fire chief when he retires.
That's, I mean, that was, that was the expectation with the creation of that position and the hiring of that person. You know, but ultimately, that's up to us to decide when that time occurs.
Okay, so I, again, that's, that's a communication topic, that we are preparing now for the future, not just, oh my gosh, we have to do this, oh my gosh, we have to react to that.
Yeah.
Making plans, I think, is really important for- Making plans, I think, is really important for us to do.
Okay.
Okay. Any more on communication?
I have a few more communication items, or I was going to mention a finance item.
I, I, I would think we should stick with one and finish so she can get the next board down.
Sure.
But wait a second, Laura, did you have anything else you wanted to put in on communication?
No, no, that's done for communication. Been pretty thorough.
I, to me, this falls into communication, the, the roles and responsibilities of board liaisons, that we have these liaison positions. It's not written down anywhere what that is. And I get that question all the time. So I think it would be a good idea for us to just decide what it means.
Right.
I'm not going to suggest anything now, but it's just one of those open things.
My suggestion?
Yes.
Liaison should attend the meetings.
As much as, but at the same time, if you're a liaison to eight different boards, that be, that becomes impractical.
I, I understand that.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not only that sometimes they're on the same night as a meeting that you have to attend, but also in my case, like, I can only take some meeting, so many meetings. Like, I really, it's just a quality of life thing. Like, I just can't do all the meetings.
I don't know how many towns even have liaisons. That's, it isn't anything I've run across before.
But that's how you communicate between boards, though.
Yes.
At least that's, you know, we've been talking communications.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that is-
Liaison is the only communication the selectmen have.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's why, that's why I categorized as communication.
Another way the liaisons, the, I kind of do the backdoor liaison job. When I can't make a meeting, I get in touch with the chair of that committee and I say, you know, give me an overview and let me know what you want me to put in my report. That's kind of the big.
Big, yes, but that's all right.
And we're going to, are we supposed to be able to decide on those positions at a certain time in the year or?
It's, it's under my responsibility to assign those out, and I'm really late with doing that this year. I really, I really am.
He's going to do it.
Yes, yes.
Fred Mitch, he's got it. He's on it.
There've been a couple of other things going on in the town, so I'm moving right along.
So are we, what are, are we moving on to a new-
I still have a couple of communication items.
Oh, gosh, okay.
Okay, that's all right. I have down as a communication before projects, and this is not something I think the board should give some overall direction on. I, I don't want to bring up any particular, any particular department, but, I mean, the DPW, for example, and I want to be very, very careful, I really like her DPW. They do a really, really good job. I think we've had a couple of instances where we got feedback from residents when, say, a street project was going on, that they didn't realize all of the details that were going on with it. And how could, you know, coming up with a way, and, and if we have a communications person, they can help with that, to communicate out to the residents of a particular neighborhood that, that's, you know, by the way, this is happening on this date, here's, you know, we are going to have to inconvenience you, but you're going to be happy with the end result, but here are some things to think about. And, you know, if, if you're in a wheelchair, you know, here are some things to keep in mind or call us to let us know. And by the way, you know, the curb is going to change, or this, that, or the other thing. I think that some additional proactive communication, and again, I apologize for picking on the DPW, it's just the first thing that came into mind. I can think of any initiative from any project. If the senior center changes something, they should communicate that out to people and anything and everybody else, but come up with some expectations for proactive communications would be good.
I like that.
Some of that has occurred, Mitch. And the DPW evidently, or somebody, with regard to this controversial project down on, on Brigham with the cemetery.
The cemetery.
I, I went knocking on doors and I asked if anyone had come to tell, you know, that this was going to take place. And somebody has been knocking on the doors and telling the people, I don't know who.
Yeah, I, I think there's, there's some of it that does take place.
Somebody knocked on the doors, at least a, a couple of them, because I knocked on the doors myself.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, they, they do some of it and, and-
I don't think, I don't think they knew the magnitude, but they knew something was going to be happening.
Yeah.
But, you know.
Yep. So, so that's that. And then the last item that I quickly categorized as communication was mentioned briefly as meeting new staff. You know, just when somebody is hired in the town, at minimum, send us a memo. Certainly if it's a department head, I think we should have the opportunity to meet them at an upcoming meeting and just say hello and it's just, just to establish that, that communication.
Yep.
Or, or a recently created position. You know, if, if in the budget season we create a new position, somebody gets hired for that, we should see them and we should probably get an update a year later as to how it's going.
Right.
Okay, so that, that concludes the obvious communication item from my list.
Well, I might like to add to one of those, and those are fabulous, by the way. The, when a, when a project is being done by a third party, not by our, our own group.
Sure.
That third part, who oversees that third party and, and the quality of work and how it, how it affected the neighborhood or whatever project they were up to? And, and having a report back of quality and all the things that you would do a review on, on third parties, because third parties have to continue work here if we like what they did. If we didn't like what they did, how do you communicate that to, to the person making those decisions? That's important. That's a part of communication that is very important because, again, the, it drops off. And then, you know, say the resident that's having something done, a major thing done to their area, they realize that now so much stuff is not being done in-house, so to speak, that third, that, that we're having so much third party.
Yeah.
And, and how does that affect the budget? How does that affect the, the employee budget? You know, we have, we have X amount of employees. Are they doing, are they doing work to complete that these things are helping them? Are they, are they freeing them up to do other work that they wouldn't otherwise be able to do? I mean, that sort of thing, I, I think, and it doesn't matter what department it is, I think that there's, everybody's asked for, for more people than what department it is.
Yeah.
So they need to communicate to us that there might be a problem or that they, they, here's a reason we need it, and maybe we can do something to, with the communication, be able to put somebody in for part-time or just fill in a little gap and then, then things can move slowly instead of just letting them all fall off.
You mean hire, hire people instead of hiring contractors?
If that, depending on what their needs are. Because, and, and I have to admit that we spend a lot of money on experts. And we don't normally do, we don't necessarily use their expert opinion once we've paid for it, for various reasons. Sometimes it's not what we wanted in the first place.
Sure.
Sometimes it didn't apply and it was just a given that, you know, okay, this person's going to do this. So that communication has to come back too and say, that, that, that expert did not carry forth what was, what we paid them to do. What do we do in the future? Do we let them know that, you know, in general, we're not happy with what happened or that we love what happened? You know what I'm saying? It's not just write the check and say, okay, thanks, we'll call you next week for the next time.
Yeah, I mean, typically the department heads have responsibility of the contractors that they hire, and the board does not get involved in the selection of those contractors.
But would they get involved if the work that was done was not done to, you know, like a general, please, I'm pleased with the work? I mean, how do they find that out?
I mean, I'd say if the board has concerns about the quality of workmanship in a project or how it was completed or, or how it was designed or any of those things, we could communicate that to that department.
Okay, how, how would we, I mean, would some, would somebody come to us with that? Or how would?
Well, if we, if we notice or hear from the public that, you know, XYZ project wasn't, wasn't done to their satisfaction, then, you know, the proper procedure is we send something, you know, either individually or as a board, depending upon how we felt, to the administrator and says, you know, we have concerns about X, Y, and Z. And, and that's that. And then the, because it's, it's hard as us from, in these cases, an outsider really, to know, you know, gee, if you didn't like the, you know, the, the color of the paint that was put on the wall or, you know, whatever the implementation detail was, was that a design decision that was made by an architect or by in-house? Or was it left up to the contractor to decide that? There are, there are a lot of permutations and then, and then the why. And sometimes it can be like, yeah, that, that, this thing is not as good as the old thing, but to get the old thing back in there working well, it would have cost twice as much and we would have had to do half as many of those things during the year, half as many feet of sidewalks or whatever it is. There's always the debate, for example, of a, you know, concrete sidewalk versus paved sidewalk. And a concrete sidewalk looks nicer and lasts longer, but it's like three times the price. So that's a, that's a never-ending debate.
Right. And I think that then gets into, again, goal and objectives.
Yeah.
What do you want?
Yeah.
What do you want to look like? What do you want, are you willing to spend more money to have a better look?
Yeah.
Because you're doubling, I mean, you may not spend a lot the first time, but if you multiply, redo, 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 where's the balance?
Yeah, yeah, it's, the, the, yeah, I, I agree. And those, those decisions, we can make those during the budget process. So, for example, if there is a request for, you know, we want X hundred thousand dollars for additional chapter ninety money to do more roads, we could ask, hey, are you doing this or are you doing that? In that, and, and we could make a decision of, for example, all right, use lower quality materials but do twice as many roads. Or we can make the decision that says, use really high quality materials but don't get as much done. Or we can make the decision of, yeah, use the quality that you're recommending, but we're going to put in another two hundred, or request town meeting, put in another two hundred thousand dollars on top of that so we can do even more. And that is, those are our decisions to make ultimately, town meetings, decisions to fund. Okay. All right. I have no other communication, no, I have no other communication items. I have a lot more items.
Which topic would you like next?
We started on finance. Do we want to start with finance?
Finance, that's good.
Okay.
Do you want to start a new page? Laura, do you want help putting them up on the wall maybe?
I really like him and he's horrible.
So you don't want them on the wall?
If you want them on the wall.
I just thought if we could see.
Yeah, Ron.
Bill's a word.
Yeah.
And he has a subcontract.
Sure.
Does he make a report to the administrator? Or is it, is it on you?
Correct.
Start on a note.
I have no idea. Yeah, I, I don't know what monthly reports there are from the DPW to the administrator. We get monthly reports from police and fire to the board. Those are the only two that we get.
So he reports to the town administrator, I would assume?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The DPW director reports to the town administrator and all, all of their communications are there. And, and I expect that whatever the expectations were for periodic reports under the old administrator will probably different, be different under the new because it's going to be a different person.
The administrator will come to you folks and he gives a report on town activities?
Yes. Yeah.
How often does he do that?
I mean, in theory, he's supposed to keep us just up to, he or she is supposed to keep us just up to date.
You're talking every month, every quarter? Or what would you like?
Yeah, I mean, what-
What, like every month?
Yeah, I mean, it's, that's up-
Every month, like bi-monthly.
What, what, what we've had, for, for example, from our interim town administrator, typically every Friday, I'd just say every Friday, but most Fridays, he sends us a quick, you know, two pair, it's just bullet, 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 here are some things going on.
If it doesn't pull the paint up, you'll have to get it repainted.
Oh, no. All right. Who's paying for that?
We'll talk to 3M.
Yeah. But there, there are different ways of doing it. So, I mean, that's something that I definitely would like to see, and that will be something that once we hire a new town administrator, you know, as part of that onboarding is what are the board's expectations at that, at that level of detail. Yeah. Yeah. I would certainly like more communication than, than less, more, more than we had before.
So it'd be a weekly, monthly, whatever.
Yeah, it could be, it could be tied, tied to each of our meetings. Each regular meeting, you know, we get a little summary in our agenda packet. A lot, a lot of boards operate that way. School committee operates that way, library trustees operates that way. That's when those updates typically come out. Okay. Finance, who wants to start?
So I think we have to do our overarching statement. And this is a, this is a living document, as people like to say. And maybe we could start with something like, the, the goal is to provide financial stability, maintain services and education while keeping the town affordable.
I'm so sorry, can you repeat that? Thanks.
Can you say that again? I think you just said that.
Oh, say it again? Okay.
Or just go back to the video later.
Provide financial stability, maintain services, quality education, while keeping the town affordable.
Financial stability.
Financial stability, maintain services, quality education, affordability. Okay, and then I have a few ideas under finance, and we did discuss already under communication, but I want to reiterate that I think that appropriations, finances, those budgets are being made, the, there should be public comment available at those meetings so that if people have questions and ideas, that's the time to do it because as everyone has said, town meeting, it's, that's not the time to say, why, you know, why do you need?
An extra.
Right, extra books or whatever. Okay. So here are some ideas under finance. Can we look into using, employing interns for certain things? Like you mentioned a communications director. I wonder if a college student might, I, I see where other towns have used interns like for the health department and things like that. Might be an interesting thing to investigate.
I don't know if I'd want to use an intern for a communications person. Maybe, maybe you work under the communications person to do some of the copywriting, but I think it should be somebody with more practical municipal experience, but, but I like the idea. And I, I think we have used interns here and there.
I think U.S. Commission had an intern.
Oh, great, great.
The senior senator did too. Kendra had us, somebody this spring, it was going to Worcester State or somewhere, yeah. She worked like one or two days a week.
I bet these people bring in great ideas and are helpful and I think it's, okay. So one of my goals is to work with CMRPC and other towns to see if there is any more ability to share services or equipment or anything like that. Also, I have to admit, I would like to have a really comprehensive discussion about tax rate. That's going to be coming up in a couple of months and I, I really want to understand more about the benefits of a split tax rate. And I would like to move ahead, well, we have to move ahead on spending the ARPA money, but also how do we find out if there's any other federal money available to us with these, you know, like the infrastructure bill or something like that? Also, I think we mentioned this, quarterly reports on, on the budget, tax, tax revenue, that sort of thing. And I think that's it for me for finance.
What was the last one? I'm sorry. The last one you said?
So something like a quarterly meeting where we get updated on, on revenue expenditures. It, it's actually in our selectmen handbook that that's what a lot of-
It is shocking that we don't have that. Truly shocking.
It's where it sounds like.
Doesn't mean it's always the way it will be.
So I, yes, so I'd like to, on, on some of the financial stability, have a review annually of what the town administrator's strategies for risk and legal budget management might be. Because we have ongoing things or depending on what's coming into them, you know, it would probably be a good idea. I mean, at this point, we just don't even have a, we have a breakdown of what we spend legal fees, you know, what are they? What, you know, how much goes to one project? How much goes to a cricket question? How often does the ZBA might ask or the planning board might ask or that sort of thing? Is, I know that, you know, usually we have a stipend that we put in, you know, we pay them, retainer for a year, I suppose. Some, some legal fees are set up so that here's your retainer and then you work off the retainer.
Yeah, work off hourly.
Some of them are for a specific, you know, specialized.
Mm-hmm.
That might be something different. Uh, I have never seen us, and maybe because I haven't been aware, but I've not seen a specific spinoff of, of an expert attorney on this, this thing.
I think, I think the, the town's in dire need of having a complete and thorough review of the operation and administration budgets and trying to reduce the cost. But who, who conducts these reviews and, and come up with these?
I, I, I'll follow up on what Lisa was talking about, which was legal counsel. I mean, legal counsel is, is us. With the exception of the school committee, they employ their own, own counsel and deal with all, you know, so anything we're talking about here has nothing to do with the school department.
Right.
But, um, you know, we, we have authority over the naming of counsel, the naming of special councils. So the town can name somebody as a special counsel for a particular, any particular purpose. Sometimes it's, uh, some towns will have a separate counsel to deal with all land, land use issues.
Okay.
Some will, all right, here's a litigation issue, um, we'll name a special counsel.
You're subject to an audit every year, aren't you Mitch?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, the town has, I asked to have an auditor every year.
So, and you get to see that.
Everybody, it's public. Everyone gets to see.
But, but, but when you're, when you're faced with, uh, you know, uh, the fiscal responsibility of, you know, not seeing just how much you can spend, but where you can reduce the costs and, uh, and mitigate tax, uh, you know, openly here and, and look at, look at the operating budgets.
So I, I will, I will twist that into one of the finance items that I had on, on my list. Um, I'll use that, that as an opening is, um, as part of the staffing study, I expect that we'll find that right at the top of the list is to split the finance director and town accountant into two separate positions. That right now, we have one person that does both. So that, so they, they, that person pays every bill, every invoice that comes in, they're responsible for processing and paying and doing the number crunching, the data entry and everything like that. They're also responsible for the long-range forecasting, the budgeting, the looking for ways to be more efficient financially. And.
Just that one person.
Just that one person does both. That's Jason Little. And I really think that we would be well-served by splitting that into two. It does, it does mean we're spending a little bit more money, but it means that we'll have somebody focused on the financial stability and the financial efficiency question. And that will be their job, not the day-to-day data entry of being a town accountant.
Could they not be hired as a, as a part-time situation?
It really should.
Or is that a full-time?
Uh, both, both, we have enough work that both really need to be full-time. I mean, the finance director really needs to be full-time.
Yeah.
And there's enough work that the town accountant.
And they got to look at everything, the department.
Yeah.
Are you suggesting bringing back the town administrator, um, the town accountant position that we merged two years ago?
So we.
Or a different position?
So at some point, the finance director position was created and added to the responsibilities of the existing town accountant.
Mm-hmm.
What I'm suggesting is we, we split them off again, but keep them both. So the finance director position didn't exist prior to then.
And they both fall under our.
They both fall on, yeah, so the finance director position does have a dotted line to us.
Yes.
Reports to the town administrator, but there is a dotted line to us.
Okay.
Which, which is not true of most other department heads.
Right. I mean, it's like police and fire.
Yeah.
So all three of those were always part of us.
It's, it's, it's different in some ways that I don't remember the, the eccentricities there. But I, I, I think at the size of our budget, we should have a dedicated finance director. And that person's the department head of the finance department.
Okay.
So, a, a, as it is now, the town accountant reports to him because he's the same person. But the treasurer reports to him, the tax collector and so forth.
All the money people.
All the money people. Uh, the assessors, um, would all, are all in that department.
And then who takes, I mean, part of that department?
Yeah.
Just so it goes to the finance. Who takes care of, um, you know, in the, in the past, uh, there was quite a lot of land that we received over lack of tax payment.
Sure.
So is there a new policy on that? Is it a general policy of saying, and do we create that policy by saying, okay, if there's X amount of money that's not being paid and they've already been fined, you know, and, and this is, this is getting up and up and up, that we should have a, a limit to how far it can go before we just go, that's enough?
So I, so I, so I started, I thought you were going to start to talk about town-owned land. And, and now you're, but, so the, it, so tax title taking is basically what you're asking about.
Yes, and that's, and again.
That's a, that's a good question. I mean, there are strict laws that allow towns to take land for unpaid taxes. They are very limpy and very onerous and are very weighted in favor of the property owner. As in most cases, they should be. That if you're senior citizens in a house and you're having trouble paying your taxes, the last thing anybody would want is the town to just quickly take the property.
That's correct.
That means in some cases, people that might not be the best citizens in the town and are just looking to get away with what they can, can get away with a lot. Um, I think it's, I think it's worth asking the question of, you know, what, you know, do we follow the same practice? And that's a question through the town administrator to the town treasurer. The town treasurer is responsible for all the tax title-taking processes.
Right. I mean, and I'm talking about larger, I'm talking about much larger.
Yeah.
Um, situations where it's, you know, in the past, um, I, you know, because I've seen an awful lot of Ms. Ward's name on things. And when I go into the registry of deeds.
Sure.
So, uh, it, it didn't seem like it took, I mean, that much, that long to get that action happening. Because when you read when it started and the amount and that sort of thing, it's pretty, some of them were pretty significantly small. But, but, but in, in shielding a, a senior population, in shielding somebody that's got a financial, uh, clearly a financial hardship, they get shielded. But the other groups are saying, because they're getting shielded, well, we, we should all get shielded. No. If in fact, it's costing money, it's costing us money, it's revenue we're not receiving, um, there has to be a, a limit, like I said, it, a cutoff limit. So when you're into the, into the fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
That's, and that's like, you know, what is it, a five-year thing or a ten-year thing? Um, it should be addressed as opposed to, you know, well, we just didn't have time to do that.
Yeah. No, I, I, I mean, I think the treasurer should and probably does take a pretty aggressive stance on that because their job is to collect the taxes. Um, I think it's worthwhile to ask, um, and to get a report on outstanding property taxes and properties and things like that. And that's, and that's.
Communications.
Yeah, that's something we, we can and should get without, without, and that's probably public record.
Right.
Wister just did that.
Yeah.
Took a woman's home.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, she hadn't paid, she got sick.
Okay.
Hospital.
Yeah.
And they give it to a third party to go after the money. The town goes.
Yeah.
It's not my fault.
Yeah.
And they took her house.
Yeah. There have been a lot of, a lot of cases like. Yeah, you, you have to be, obviously you want to be careful about that. You know, that's not something we want.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, years ago in the annual report, there used to be a report of those people who owed back taxes.
Oh, jeez.
Was that right?
Really?
Seriously, I'm going back into the.
Sure, there's some businesses.
Well, see, probably sixty, seventies.
Okay.
It used to.
Yeah.
And, but, see, some people might be, uh, debating the value of, that was value.
Yeah.
That, that appeared as a rear of the taxes.
Yeah.
But.
But they're still going through the abatement process.
Yeah, they're going through the.
Oh, they're appealing.
So you got to be careful with that.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. And in that situation, you're not allowed to take property.
Now, if the town does take property, we shouldn't hold on to it.
Correct. That's where, yes.
That was I.
Yeah, we're not in the real estate business.
Right.
Per se.
Yeah.
It's fine for open space, but if you got a tax-paying property.
Yeah.
It's not paying and you take it, sell it so you can.
Yes.
Stop getting taxes from it again.
Yeah, it, it surprises me.
That sounds familiar.
Yeah.
Can we just do that? Can we just do that? Don't we have a property now that we're?
The town, town has a lot of, a lot of property. And towns have reasons to hold on to certain parcels. But we should, it, we should, you know, every three years, something like that, just have an auction of outstanding property that the town doesn't have any use for. Uh, many towns do that. That's a, just a normal course of business. It surprises me that I haven't seen that in the few years I've been involved. Um, just because it, there's a, a piece of property, so that even if it's a small parcel and, you know, no one's ever going to build a house or build a business on there, um, try to get rid of it.
Right.
So that we don't have the liability for it. Maybe we'll get a little bit of tax revenue from it. Maybe something, somebody will do something productive with it. Sometimes it's a sliver of land next to somebody's house.
Yeah.
And that homeowner is going to buy it for a thousand dollars. Great, off the books.
Right, right. First one of those.
On that, on that note Mitch, I hope the board sees fit to, uh, act pretty quickly on the old fire station on Church Street and try to facilitate a prospective buyer who's been sitting around for the last four or five years waiting for that.
We have, we, we have an open.
While we complain about the unbeautification of downtown and there's no parking and all of that stuff, you know, help, we're, help, we're go ahead with this thing.
We, we have, we have an open RFP on it right now.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Here's Cruz.
Laura, can you write tax title taking?
Sure.
I'm actually going to use these for the minute.
Um, can I do a finance thing?
There's a lot of people in town that own their houses outright that are in the low-income, middle-income seniors, uh, and retirees that, uh, are having tax problems. And even, even though you've paid off the mortgage on your house, you're running into a situation where property taxes are cutting into two or three months of your savings and retirement and it hurts.
Well, that.
Even some of your town employees have mentioned, not publicly, but in the talks, that it's getting hard to stay in town.
Right. Well, then, so we have already started a little bit of the senior, uh, what was it, a hold?
It, it.
A senior work.
You cannot pay your taxes.
The, the senior tax deferral.
Right.
That we approved to the expansion of that at the last annual town meeting. And I hope some people will be able to take advantage of that.
It won't solve the problem.
It won't. There, unfortunately.
The furry taxes and work programs don't.
Yeah. The, the deferral taxes, if, for those in that really low-income bracket, in which we expanded to be less low income, it's still very low income, um, it's a tremendous help because it's a permanent deferral essentially. Um, you can defer the taxes for the rest of your life if you are a senior citizen and so forth. Um, and, and don't make too much money. But there are a lot of people that are still struggling that that doesn't qualify for. Um, we're at the maximum and I hope every couple of years, we just re-up to whatever the maximum happens to be. Um, you know, unfortunately Massachusetts doesn't provide many options for ways of.
They've got the problem to do with them, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, I mean, the, we are limited in terms of the tax deferrals and, and the tax discounts, if you will, or anything like that, to whatever Massachusetts says we can do. We can't create our own structure. So.
You can, you can, uh.
Like we couldn't give a lower rate to a senior citizen, even if we thought we wanted
No, but I think in the case of seniors, I've seen other towns within Worcester County and in Massachusetts, uh, for senior citizens, uh, uh, cut, cut the property taxes by quite a few percentages.
If, I, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't.
That didn't take state approval.
Yeah, I don't know of that being an option. If you can find it.
No, no, it's, it's an option if we decide to make it.
If you, do me a favor, please, find a town that does it.
No, they, they, they do it. And even in Maine, even in Maine, they're.
Yeah. Oh, oh, a lot of, a lot of other states do have that avail. My in-laws lived in New York. I, they, they had that. They, they were exempt from paying education taxes.
I mean, for, for people that run social security, and I'll tell you, when I was with the Lions Club and I had to go around, this goes back to ninety or so, when I was, uh, King Lion and Secretary for the Lions Club, but we were picking up people, seniors to go to the Thanksgiving thing. Let me tell you, I, I ran into some houses where some of the old towns were really having a hard time with their expenses.
I'll ask, if you can find a town in Massachusetts that does what you describe, say, get the details on that and send it to me. Because I can look into, which is how the senior tax exemption came out.
Get the details, Mitch.
Yeah.
If not, we can discuss it with our state legislators.
Yeah, yeah, I, I.
Well, you ought to bring, uh, yeah, you ought to bring Robin and, uh, and, uh, which my fellow.
Kate, Kate, Don Healy.
Yeah.
Bring them in and, uh.
Okay.
And, uh, I'm sure they'll be receptive.
Yeah.
Even, even.
Yeah. My, my gut feeling is what you're describing would need to be approved by the legislature, but prove me wrong, please.
By the state?
Yeah, yeah. If you could, if you can find a town that's done it another way, please.
Blackstone did it for my mother and father and someone else. And this goes back, for God's sakes, into the sixties and seventies.
Okay. Well, if you can find a town that does it now, let, let me know.
Douglas did it.
Douglas didn't. Douglas had nothing.
They had, they had a guy leave Douglas for another town and they, they reduced that taxes right down.
Okay.
Oh, my gosh.
Ha, ha, ha. Very good. On that, on. I'm slow, I'm focused, I'm focused on North Grove. Don't remind me of my old town. All right.
I was kidding.
A number of minutes ago, I think you said you had something for finance.
I have a, I have an ARPA goal thing, if that's okay with everyone, like a finance goal thing. Well, ARPA is under finance. That's what Julian said at the beginning.
I, mine was very general, good, you know.
Yes. But, so I just want to get it on the, on the board.
Okay, okay.
So, um, I wanted to, as a goal, I think one of our goals should be to, um, discuss what our priorities are for the ARPA money and what, um, what ships have sailed, what we're not going to spend it on, if that's appropriate to talk about. Um, or are we going to make a list of all the options, like all the ARPA things, right? Um, my little, um, addition to that would be that it's fun to think about what's one thing that we as a board could invest in for the town that the town wouldn't be investing in otherwise. Because something that will sort of increase the value of the town.
Right. So everybody's invested. Like I, and, and for instance, I would, I would recommend that we, in the downtown area, that we get a price for underground wiring and new lights and new, uh, the types that are very attractive, that you can put the banner on and you can put the plants on. A lot of towns are doing it. It doesn't have to be the entire street. It's a certain section.
The little downtown.
And that benefits everyone.
No, it's really true.
It's, it's not just.
Underground utilities would be great.
Yeah, and I think, I think.
But also just getting rid of the wires and making it look nice. That's a nice idea. Yeah, things like that. Did you?
So, and I have a specific idea, Chris?
No, I had the idea that we should come up with ideas.
And I piggybacked on that idea.
There you go. See, that was a great idea. That's what I was talking about.
But I, I do think I'd like to get a price on that. I know Holden has done it. I know Chelmsford has done it.
Holden did it when I lived in Holden.
Oh, is that right?
Which was in the early two thousands. They did it a long time ago.
Would that be a state responsibility?
Yes.
Well, we'd have.
We would have to work with the state.
We would have to work with the state, but.
But I, but I think in Holden, it's a state road too. I think it's one twenty-two.
Yeah, I, I would, I would love to find out, you know, what the particulars, but, but in my estimation, that the easier way to do that as well is that we've heard that the street is, oh, the streets are terrible to rip up the street. But you, why can't you take up the sidewalk and run it along the, underneath the sidewalk and then put it back?
It's totally doable. It's just a pain. It is a pain. It's totally doable. It's just a pain. It is a pain. And people will grumble and there's traffic and there's bumps and it's a pain, but when it's done, it's worth it.
I, I, I like it.
Can I bring Captain?
I know, I know. It's down there, everything's underground.
Right.
Yeah.
It's nice not to have the poles and everything.
I think it would make a huge, huge difference.
Yeah, yeah. Our downtown should really be underground utilities.
I thought that there were some really good recommendations from the auditor report on things that we can add, possibly to work with Jason Little on, from a process perspective, so I was hoping to add that. I know that the Senior Center had mentioned doing meals five days a week, so I don't know what the cost impact of adding that in would be.
At the cafe.
Put it up, put it up first.
But I know that a lot of the seniors have mentioned that that's their nutrition.
You want me to write this down?
No, 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 I'm good. I'll put it in, but I'm just explaining why I'm sharing that.
I got something written down here. I'll give it to you.
Thank you.
Boy, you gotta read your email.
I haven't, I honestly, I'm so sorry. I don't know how I missed it.
All right.
What did you just mean?
No, I, I always reply.
Oh, she always answers.
She's a give filter.
I don't know how I missed it.
I got it here.
So, thank you.
So, when do we have to spend, when do we have to commit the ARPA money?
So, end of calendar year 2024, everything has to be committed. And every, and by the end of 2026, it needs to be spent. And anything-
Do we know what's been committed already this year? Do we?
Yeah, I don't remember off the top of my head, but we, yeah, we have records on that.
We gave about 1.3 left?
No, I think more.
More than that.
You think you've got more than that?
Yeah.
1.7?
It should be two something.
Oh, I don't think it's two anymore.
Yeah, we, we spent a good chunk of money on the school roof.
Yeah, I think it's like 1.8 left or something like that.
Really? Yeah.
Yeah, something like that.
And then you also spent it on some other projects, 50 here and 70 here and so forth. So, it sneaks up on you when you spend a little bit here and a little bit there.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
It really sneaks up on you.
So, I mean, that should be something too, that we put a, put a time limit on that to be able to get that information and make that decision.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, a big thing that we were waiting for relates to downtown redevelopment. And Lori Connors has requested to come to our meeting, first meeting in September.
Right.
Or at least one of the two meetings in September, because there's a lot piling up, to, to talk and make a request for some of those things. So, there are, there are a few things coming in from that downtown redevelopment.
All right.
Project.
At the same time, we better get a, a report from the Finance Director about what exactly we left.
Oh, yeah. I mean, that, that would be, that would be part of it.
Okay.
That's, that's easy to figure out, because when we, when we made our last decisions about ARPA in the spring, when we approved the school project, there was a memo in there of what we had spent so far and what was left. So, we can easily deduct from that.
Yeah, he's, he's great.
Mm-hmm, got it.
I'm just adding this one in that we spoke about at the beginning, the collaborative budgets with town staff for annual meeting, for annual town meeting. Were there any other finance goals?
When can I get a raise?
Double your salary.
I actually think, I actually think we should get paid a little, and we don't get paid that much, but I think we should get paid less.
I don't think I can get a salary.
I'll take yours, Mitch.
Do I get anything different? I don't even know.
No.
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
All right.
Double, I guess you don't get paid.
All right, the, all right, so I'm gonna-
Should we say, would economic fall under finance? Economic development?
Yeah, I was gonna say you stole it from me.
I'm sorry.
No, it's right there.
Nope.
Yeah. So, it is honestly a great shock and unconscionable to me that the town of Northborough does not have an economic development commission. It, that is probably the biggest surprise when I moved here and started to review the government structure. That we don't have anything for that. It's not that there hasn't been economic development, but it has, it has not been driven by the public or by any dedicated staff member. A lot of towns will hire a development director for this purpose.
With an economic development plan or consideration, do you want to start looking at your economic direction and strategy?
Yep. That's, that's a big part of that, yeah. And, you know, we have, you know, two simultaneous priorities. We have things that are on the outskirts of town that have one sets of needs. And we've got the downtown, which has a completely different set of needs and a completely different set of priorities. And really need to be looking at both. You know, you could almost make an argument, you could have two economic development commissions, one for downtown, one for everywhere else. I don't think I want to go that far. And I think any, anybody would cut off my head if I said, let's create two new committees, one's enough. But it, it is, it's shocking to me that we don't have one. And I see things happen in some neighboring towns that, that have some really creative uses. Westborough has done some great things with underutilized properties where, you know, an empty storefront, they will work with the, the owner of the property and somebody who wants to create a business and bring that business in for like a month or three months for super discounted rent and say, set up shop, see how your business works, try it out. And if it works out, great, then set up a long-term lease.
That bookstore last summer.
Okay, okay.
There's a bookstore in downtown Westborough right now that's doing exactly that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I've seen some things like that. I think Hudson may have done some, some somewhat similar things. They have a very active, active economic development commission, as well as just a downtown organization of business owners that's there too, which is also, I think, something we should have of the downtown area. And, you know, is, set up an economic development commission. And I would give some consideration to hiring a staff person. There's pros and cons. I'm sure you're thinking, you're looking at me with an evil eye saying, you know, yeah, I know. But, but the goal, the goal, one of the goals of economic development is to bring in additional tax revenue. My opinion, it's not the only goal, but it is a goal. And so hopefully that person would end up paying for themselves over the long term. Sometimes that person can also be out looking for grants.
Again, again, you know, you go back to the master plan and, and back to what we had originally envisioned this town to be and wanted and what the town was, you know, coming out of World War II, 1950, you had less than 5,000 people. By the time I moved in in 72, you had 7,000 something. Now we're up over 15. That doesn't mean that the quality of living has matched the economic benefits that have come to the town residents or to the town itself. Matter of fact, they, they don't. There is a, a growth and development limit that you reach where development is no longer beneficial, as we frankly. And you get into this pattern now where with every house that's built and every warehouse and every building permit you put this down, it's costing a lot more than the revenue you ever get back for. It's costing a lot more in services and taxes and everything else than you can generate revenue for. So, you've got to be careful. When we did the master plan, the people that took part in the, in the master planning, public meetings indicated, they tried to contain the major development for the malls that we already have down here on the other side of town, on the western side of town. The businesses that we were looking at were more of the, you know, white collar type of individual businesses rather than the large corporations, manufacturing type stuff that involved up over often by the high school. But anyway, that's what we were looking at. And when you, when you look at downtown, that's really what we wanted to try to maintain in that downtown area, those type of small businesses. So-
I love this idea because I think we all have to admit that, for example, retail is a very changed environment now. And, and we're going to need some really honest discussions about, you know, the, the nice little bookstore.
You're going to have to look at really hard at what you want to approve to come in.
And what will survive.
And what will survive, because a lot of them aren't going to.
Yeah. Yeah, just everything's changing now. So, so I, I definitely think so. But one of the things that we didn't, that we never seem to have, and I think might fall under the economic development, is, is creating opportunities for transportation, not enhancing, but transportation. We have nothing. I mean, we have the senior bus occasionally.
That was in the master plan for increasing that.
We have, we've got nothing to create, whether it's a business, a model, or anything that would create some sort of a bus through town for-
Yeah, extending on to W, probably the WRTA, or it could be the Metro West one that goes to Marlboro. You know, there are, there, yeah.
We need to look into that, because I think so much now, everybody has a car, but the people who don't or, or the seniors who, I mean, their bus, that bus isn't always available from, I know I tried, even during the voting season. And they were like, oh, we don't have a driver.
Regular public transportation is obviously something we completely lack and should really have. You know, a lot of the, the downtown proposals involve some high-density housing that would justify bus stops. And I'm not, you know, and I know, I know that's, that's a hot potato, but that, that is something that you get with that, is then you can go to the, because if you went to, to the state or went to WRTA and say, we'd like you to put a bus stop in downtown Northborough, they would look and say, nobody lives here. And why would they have a stop there?
Here, here again, though, you know, you're, you're, you're in a catch 22. If you start, you know, advocating or promoting, you know, another 500 units of housing downtown in order to justify public transportation, you also have to deal with the cost of that.
Yeah.
This comes back around and it really isn't, it isn't going to solve the tackle problem.
Yeah, it's, they, they all have pros and cons. So, you know, if, for example, the proposal that, you know, we, we will be forced to rezone some parts of town to, to be compatible with the MBTA adjacency law.
Unless.
Unless the law changes.
Law changes. Unless Holden.
Holden, Holden has refused to do it. There's a lawsuit right now.
So, their lawsuit, if they win their lawsuit, that's precedent.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And, and right now, you have to look at the, what is the, what is the burning need to bring that kind of density? You know, certainly downtown, to me downtown is like, we don't have the infrastructure, road wise, to do-
So, on the assumption that we are required, under, under current law, we are required to increase the zoning. And the biggest project that has been discussed is at the outskirts of town or the Shrewsbury line, the baseball fields that are there. The property owner wants to do a project like that. And that, that may happen even without the MBTA law. That-
Well, out in the Pioneer Valley, you know, they do have a, a bus line.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know that, yeah.
I do. And that's a great, that's a great program. I went to college out there and I went to one of the smaller colleges.
They could do it.
And it was a lifeline for those small towns. It's really wonderful.
We had bus lines when I came to Northborough. You could go from Northborough to Boston and you could go to Worcester.
Yeah.
But the, the, the passengers weren't there.
Yeah.
Everybody wanted to drive. That's still the problem. Everybody, everybody wants to drive.
That was when gas was cheap and the cars were big.
Yeah. But, yeah, I think if, you know, if we go, went to one of the agencies that's running a bus system now, we would have to not only ask, we would have to justify that there are riders for them. And that is, you know, if that, if there are any large, high-density developments in Northborough, that would provide some justification, no matter where it is.
The roads and the parking are limitations.
Yeah, oh, no question.
And so, you know, like the cake, we're not going to try to widen the damn roads. You can't do that.
Mm-hmm.
And that's a state road anyway, but you don't want to do that. So, you've got to try to be able to offset that with public transportation of some sort.
Yeah, yeah. I don't, I don't see the town of Northborough taking ownership of public transportation. I, I, I think we, we tie into one of the systems that we are adjacent to. And we are adjacent to, I think, three different systems. And one way or another, you know, finding a way to tie into them would be helpful.
Well, you know, if, if we do get a cute little downtown with all those lovely lights, we could get a little rickshaw company. We could take them, at least out to Route 9, so they can go down 135 and, and just get onto 9 where the, the things are happening.
I do remember, I was reading about this a few years ago, or there was a town that rather than employing public transit, they had an agreement with Uber and they were able to save a lot of money on public transit because they didn't want to bring in the big equipments, I'm sorry, the, the additional service. So, there may be more creative ways that we can look at that to help solve our-
Buy some, buy some self-driving cars.
Well, no, I was thinking like-
Yeah.
The rideshare programs, but self-driving cars are good too.
Which is why the way that Uber is going, is they're, they're going that way.
The, the Senior Center had a grant back a couple of years ago where you wanted to go to Boston for a medical thing, you could do it. Not that many people took advantage of it.
Yeah, which is why that might be a better option than investing one of these bigger services.
And then we went to taxi, I think it was Taxi Out of Framingham, we had a, a contract with. And once again, people just didn't use it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's hard to, well, you go meet the pub, meet the public.
I'm glad you're here.
I do. I don't know what it takes.
So, and I just have one more thing I'd actually like to put back on the communication side.
Yeah.
But it's the overreach of communication. There's, there's a, a big problem, I think, with many citizens that the cell towers, as many as we have, doesn't seem to give us clear service. I mean, there's one at the, I, I live, you know, on the west side, east side of town.
Yeah.
We have, the police station has one. There's one now across, at the White Cliffs Telephone Hall. It doesn't do any different than before it was up. And I have people that are pixel, in my ear. It's very frustrating and then-
Get your phone, your home, get your, your iPhone onto your wifi in your house.
It is.
For the cell service, which is a setting you can turn on. So, that's like a-
That, that's one. But I know that up on, you know, in the Green Street area and everything else, it's so wooded that there's just, it's, you can't hear, you can't conduct business. And more people are getting away from home phones and wanting to utilize those cells and-
Essentially, because that's all private industry. I, I don't know of any towns that operate their own cell towers.
Does Shrewsbury though? Shrewsbury does some of their own communication.
Shrewsbury does their own communication. I don't think they do cellular service. They do their own cable, they do their own electricity.
Yeah.
And telephone. But I don't think they do their own cell. It's an interesting idea.
Since we have the, the towers over in Port West.
We don't have enough to do. I think that's a great idea, Mitch.
No, I, I'm, I have a couple more finance things, sorry.
Ready? No problem.
Anyone else have any finance things? All right, I've got a couple more that-
Can we, after finance, can we just take a little break?
Yes, yes. I think we, I was going to suggest we think about how, how to deal with next. So, kind of, sort of related to finances, bylaw recodification.
Oh, my gosh, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Definitely.
You know, is that really finance? I, I don't know what category that goes into.
Yeah.
But that's something that we have talked about doing as a town, is having, having someone go through our bylaws and just, you know, the purpose of recodification is to make sure they are still legal and make sure the reference to chapter 1, 2, 3 of the state law still actually points to the right place and everything else, so that you have a good starting point for, for future cleanup and future modifications. Something we haven't done.
Do you try to put money for that?
No.
No?
No.
We can, sure.
No. We have a downtown project. We have a downtown project.
The answer is legally, sure, we can. But that should be, that should be normally funded as part of the budget every 10 years or so.
Mm-hmm.
I, I mentioned earlier a staffing study.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't remember where I put that or if that was already mentioned. And actually, somebody already, I think Julianne, everybody mentioned financial updates to the board, you know, whether it be quarterly or monthly or something like that.
Monthly.
I think we should get, get, I mean-
Right now.
Pretty easy to run a report monthly.
Yeah, and then, you know, in a couple of years, maybe it'll be quarterly.
Yeah, we should, we should see some of the things more often. All right, that's it for finance for me.
Can I ask a question on the recodification? I know that in 2009, the entire zoning book was done over.
2009?
Yeah. Nobody really looked at it. It was just, we're at a town meeting, here it is, read it.
Okay.
If you didn't read it, too bad, vote yes or no.
Okay.
Many things changed that nobody was aware of changed.
Okay.
And we were told at that time, oh, if there's a problem, we can go back and, and adjust it. And yet every time we tried to adjust it, it was, oh, nope.
Yeah, because you've changed it already. So, that's what, yeah.
So, I would like, I don't know if that can be part of that recodification, but there's-
I mean, recodification should give you the same start point and endpoint.
Okay.
It, it shouldn't have practical changes in it. So, what, what you're describing, I wasn't here then, but what you're describing to me isn't a recodification, even if it was stated as such.
Okay, because that'll be-
There were, there were change, there were practical changes made.
Okay. But I think we went around some pretty bad ideas and, and now we're, we're feeling a pain of it. So, it won't be under, obviously, finance, but I think it's an important thing to establish. Are we going to take a little walk?
All right, um, do we want to-
Can't rip it?
We have a technical problem.
No, we don't have a technical problem. I just, we were trying to be quiet so you guys could hear.
All right, do we, do we want to take a 10-minute break?
It's informal.
So moved.
Okay, all right, all right, 10-minute recess. Okay, all right. All right, 10-minute recess.
10-minute recess.
Through, uh, through goals and training and everything like that. Uh, you know, probably sometime in the latter September timeframe, we haven't scheduled that yet. And hopefully he'll watch this meeting as a way of educating him about us before we have that session. Uh, and, um, and that's one opportunity of many for us to talk about these things. Um, I'm also perfectly happy having a subs- well, we will have subsequent meetings anyway. But if anyone feels that we haven't gotten through even the first night of this tonight, we can schedule another one.
I'm almost thinking I'd like to see, I'd like to see a skeleton of what we've already done tonight. Much like this, incorporate some of the draft idea into that. So that it's, it's not as huge an item all at once.
Yeah.
I think if, if that, bringing all this in, putting it in, uh, in organizational, organized fashion.
Yeah.
Helps. Um, because I personally would like to see that when we do bring Mr. Nutting in, that it's more of a, uh, that he's, after seeing, maybe if he's watched the meeting and what we've discussed, that looking for direction on how to accomplish those things next, as opposed to just.
Right.
The accomplishment is very important because.
Yeah.
We really don't wanna.
Yeah, and, and Mike Gallagher, our interim town administrator, as of tomorrow, uh, I'm sure will wanna watch this to see some of the things that are going on for the, you know, few months that he'll be here. Cause we'll, we'll need his help in organizing this.
So do we wanna do like this next one as a miscellaneous title and then we can arrange by category then?
Category later.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Sure. Okay. Laura, do you wanna go first with anything?
I'll go at the end.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Okay.
I, could I start?
Absolutely.
Um, I would love to get building projects on the list of priorities, um, goals.
Yeah.
To whatever, um, but we have, obviously, the white elephant is the White Cliffs, right? The big, big thing that looms over everything we do, it feels like, so. White Cliffs, I have, um, a few subheadings on that, but we can talk about those later, just. Town Hall.
Yep.
Uh, that's another big project.
Yep.
Um, the fire station.
Yep.
And, uh, Peaslee School.
Can I add to your list?
You can, cause I am, I'm all done.
Um, uh, the downtown revitalization. Complete Streets.
Slow down. She's writing fast.
Yep.
And, well, the, this is kind of off the topic of ongoing projects, but, um, we, we at some point have to review executive session minutes, but that's, that, that's so off topic, forget that. So, just.
Diane has that, has that prepared, will probably do that, I'm guessing, the second meeting of September.
Oh, great, okay, okay, yes, so I think, I think Kristen had most of it and I, I just wanted to add those two.
So, is there a subcategory again gonna go down into?
We're not really doing categories now, I'm just putting everything out that everybody's saying.
Well, do we re- rewrite our spending on that because of the downtown revitalization that's on that? Or is that something that's still back?
It's, it's, it's there, I mean, it's there in the big picture, so, uh, as I said, you know, many of these things will fall into multiple categories.
Okay, so, and then, um, on the comple- we did say complete streets, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so the, under the complete streets, and again, I wanna highlight crosswalks and sidewalks.
Yep. I did, so along those lines, I also said bike paths and bike lanes, which I follow in that.
Yes, yeah, and then, I'd like to add.
Yeah?
Waterways.
Oh, yes.
Are you saying crosswalks and what?
Waterways.
Waterways.
Can you clarify what you mean by waterways?
The Assavet, the Assavet, um, water that we have, like it goes underneath the, the arched bridge.
Yep.
Um, and then going up into some, further up the street.
Do you mean like, like?
Cleaning it up.
Yes, cleaning the Assavet River.
Bartlett Pond, for example.
And, um.
Bartlett Pond has some weeds, yes, some weed problems.
Yep.
And I know we've put money aside for Bartlett Pond, but I don't know why Bartlett Pond was.
I know Conservation's been working on that.
So, um, so that's kinda important because, again, you could do some, now, for me, a little bit of economic development into the po- the waterways, is you could do something with kayaking, you know, some, some recreational use that we don't have. But we have this, this could be very nice, I know I actually kayaked on a little section of it. Kayak, yeah, but, but we have a boat launch right there off Lyman Street.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, you know, it would really behoove us to, to work on that.
So, as far as bike lanes and paths, we should add the, um,
Trail.
The, the tr- yeah, what's that called, the?
Northborough Trails?
No, the.
The one that brings Westboro in with us to some, Rail Trail, I guess it's called?
Making us part of that multi-town rail trail that connects all across the state.
I used to know that acronym, I don't remember now.
I forget what it's called, too, yeah, but, um.
Borough something, or?
Yeah, no, the.
We know what you're talking about.
Yeah, and it would, part of it would be on the aqueduct. Um, and we wouldn't necessarily need to pave it or anything, it could just be.
I know we had talked about doing something on top of the aqueduct bridge, too, to make that accessible again, is that something we wanna add there, or is that not feasible now?
Well, no, I thought it was already.
Oh, the bridge, okay.
Over the bridge, I thought this discussion.
Working on that, the DPW is working on that, yeah.
Accessibility isn't there, and.
No, but the DPW is, they're trying to get grants or something, we voted on that.
Yes, yeah, we put money into, uh, into looking in detail, but not the construction aspect of it, but the design aspect of it.
Okay, that's good.
So, I think for the overarching goal for this.
Yep.
Category, how do you feel about establish a list of ongoing projects and get updates on progress on a regular basis? Something like that?
That's good.
Because people do often say, hey, you know, we, we put money, we voted for money at town meeting, and what's happening with that, so.
Okay, no, that, and that's, that bridge is a perfect, the aqueduct bridge, we could use an update, that's a perfect example of that.
Yes, yes.
Did, did Scott get this?
Hmm.
Um, spend this money on this person or this group that was going to advise, and what's the outcome of it? I don't know that we've had an update on that.
I don't think we have.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, lastly, I'm not, I don't know if it falls into that for me, is, um, on, uh, Westman Street, uh, I'm gonna say three, three twenty-nine to three forty-five, that area of, of road, um.
Tell me what's there, I don't remember the numbers.
Tridabye.
Okay.
Is no longer there anymore, but that area is allowed a certain amount of hazardous waste material.
Mm-hmm.
To remove that.
Okay.
Because a- at the time, they were granted, uh, like a ten thousand gallon thing from the fire department. But the town said, mm, we don't want it, there's wells up there, I mean, some of this grandfathering that seems to be used for allowing things to go by isn't necessarily, uh, valid. And, and I think that we're really not, that's important for us to start looking at, really what's, and then again, there's a waterway right down there, what is that, Hopbrook? Does, does Hopbrook go right by?
I think so.
So, and, and there's, there's like a culvert that's going underground from that area, that goes right into the brook. So, I, I think that we really have to start looking at non-conforming and, uh, you know, going into anything that's into the waterways because we continue to let them expand into it instead of saying, look, we need to look at.
This, and this is an area that working with the planning board, uh, makes a lot of sense.
And the DPW, I think.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, certainly regulation-wise, a lot of these things fall under the planning board, but some, but some fall under us.
Yes, in CBA.
Yeah, there is some overlap, and we've been talking for a long time, I know, since I started on the board, Julianne and I have been talking about, wouldn't it be nice to have a meeting with the planning board on whatever the overlap?
Right, and, and just in general, yeah, work together.
Yeah.
So, um, so I think that's great, cause that's the collaboration and the communication that I think.
Yeah.
Will work with everybody.
I had another building idea that, and I don't know if it's a building, but like a teen drop-in center or something that I've heard popped up, I don't know if you've driven through downtown on a half day, there's always lots of kids milling around, so having a space that they can go to, um, I mean, uh, just a thought.
Yeah.
Yes, that's been brought up a lot.
Yeah, some sort of a community center.
Yeah, and the library's done a great job on their programs, but I don't think they want all the middle schoolers there.
Well, I don't think, yeah, and not all kids wanna go to the library.
That's right.
And we do have town hall down there, you, you asked for town hall, so. Town hall is already listed.
Yep, yeah, so will you, did you write down a joint meeting with the planning board?
I'll put that there.
And Laura, you brought up a, a topic which is very interesting, sustainability, Kristen, I think that's on yours.
That was Kristen's, I just put it in there so we didn't miss it.
Oh.
But I've put sustainability of all decisions, just meaning that when we're making decisions, we'll consider the sustainability of them, did I?
And that's something that we could talk about with the planning board, cause that very much affects them.
Can we have that as a short category, because I, I'd like to add things like electric charger, electric car chargers to that. That's something we could get done, I think.
So, that actually plays into economic development as well, the car chargers? So, I remember last year or whatever, someone said, can we not worry about getting electric car chargers for the handful of people in town who have electric cars? It's not for the people who live in town, people who live in town have their own electric charging setup somehow. That's how you can have an electric car. I have one in my garage, other people have another system they use, they go down to the Bank of America and Marlboro or whatever. But that's just it, they put them in places where there are shops and restaurants because you need something to do while you're waiting for your car to charge. So, if we had one in downtown and then we had a cute restaurant, or, I mean, we do have C'est Le Vie, but if it's, if we had another cute restaurant, or, well, we do, we have, we have a few cute restaurants downtown, right? But if we had enough options for people, if we had a few shops as well, you do, a lot of times it's about forty minutes. I don't mind getting out of my car for forty minutes and walking around acute downtown and getting to see a new town. Um, it's really for people who are passing through, who need a place to charge quick and wouldn't they like to try out that cute restaurant while they're there? Um, so it's a really good economic development idea.
I think Four West Main Street is a great place to put.
Yes, well, you don't want one, though, I think it's a good idea to have a whole.
Yeah, li- library should have a couple, Four West Main.
And a lot of.
Let's figure out what the uses of Four West Main is part of it.
Well, and keep in mind, too, these chargers, like, a lot of times, like at libraries, they will have one, but it'll be a slow charger, there's slow chargers and fast ones. The fast one is the one the person passing through town is looking for, cause they need to be able to charge their car within an hour or so, and then keep going. Um, if you put a slow one in at some, like some restaurants, some brew pubs and stuff will have a slow charger and they get people, and a lot of times those are free, cause they don't use that much electricity, it's actually quite cheap to run them, so. They get the business of the person who wants to go to the brew pub and they plug in for the time that they're there, and, you know, I'm sure there are grants for this kind of thing, too. But you have to keep in mind, like, do we want some slow, some fast, yeah, sure, definitely, but not just all slow.
Okay. Thank you.
I just, I love this.
Yeah? Experienced electric car person. I've got a plug-in hybrid, so I do some of it, but I don't, I don't need it.
Right, you have, you're gassed, too.
I've got the dead dinosaurs to run on if I need to.
So, Laura, did you say that you, uh, refr- repeat what you said, something about all new building projects? I mean, we, we do have the stretch code, but, for example, we gave money for the new roof at Procter.
Yeah.
And that supposedly is going to be solar panel ready, correct?
I don't know, that was one of my questions, is solar panels on roofs, but I'm not sure which building you're talking about, or what that comment, I don't know what I said.
So, I thought you, you referred to something like, all new building projects, we, we should do whatever we can to make sure they're as green as possible.
Oh, that was Kristen.
And also, you know, we should get an update on, on the green community status that we have, because that's, it's, doesn't that qualify?
I think that's just a, a thing of like a, something we achieved a few years ago and we were designated as a green community.
Uh-huh.
I, I, I don't know what bar they had to jump over to get there, but I don't think it's anything that changes that you get updates on. But I do think that we could get updates, like I know when they were putting in, um, or maybe it was at, right after they had put in the Amazon warehouse on Bartlett Street, they had talked about, well, why didn't we talk about having, um, the, the parking lot be, um, for the employees have, there's some sort of.
Solar panels, I think the National Green has them.
Yeah.
Yes, 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 yeah, so it's got a roof, but.
Yeah, like a roof to the parking lot, yeah.
Yeah, that's even at Four West.
And, and honestly, like on the top of the warehouse, could there be some kind of garden or grass or whatever? Um, there's a lot of things that could have been done that weren't done, and, you know, they've already passed all their planning board requirements, they're not looking for new permits, so I don't know that we can do it. Um, no, but.
A meeting with planning board would be beneficial.
Yeah, and because maybe there are new building projects that.
And I think we've talked about this a lot over the years, is if you take a tree down, put a tree up, so we have more like tree replacement.
We're supposed to have that, we're, it's in, it wasn't the bylaws, that every tree you took down.
The select board is, is responsible for shade trees, and, and.
And if you took one down, you were supposed to put one back.
Where do they need one?
No, but I.
Just on the public ways.
Yeah, you know, I mean, yeah, and, and like they took several down at the, at the Ellsworth Park, because I saw the, I saw the stumps cut to the ground, so that, looks like it used to be lined on the, you're coming in, the, from the beginning. And now there's just, the trees are on the other side of the, uh, building?
I think that DPW has a pretty low threshold for what's diseased, because to them, it's safer to cut down a tree rather than have it drop a branch on a kid.
Well, and, and, you know, yes and no to some of that, but, but just to that point.
Yeah.
The new ones that they planted along Route one thirty-five are dying.
Yeah.
So there has to be a year's, a year's, um, warranty on them.
War, a warranty on the trees, yeah.
And that needs to be addressed, that can't be left for next year and never looked at.
And also, when we were talking about this, when we were talking about the cemetery, I don't know whether it was before the election or not, but I remember somebody saying, um, if we, someone wanted to, I guess this is sort of an economic development thing, like if someone wanted to go to Bigelow and say, would you like to donate a couple of trees to the town, and we'll give you a little, you know, marker saying these trees were donated by, and, you know, it's kind of like advertising, but it's also a free tree for us.
So, this, this brings up the question of whether or not we should have a sustainability committee, because we have some super smart people in this town who are dedicated to this topic.
We do.
Westboro has a very robust, um, I think it's Westboro Sustainable or something like that, but they are doing fantastic things. And I think that should be something we talk about.
Our people work with them a lot, they know, our, the Northborough Sustainability people work with the Sustainable Westboro people a lot, yeah.
Yeah, I think, um.
And, and as what, as the Westboro representatives will always say, you know, saving the earth and helping with climate change is, is not just a town.
Right.
We should all be working.
No, and, and that's definitely, uh, uh, not an individual town-based thing, it's a, it's a community effort, it's a.
Should be worldwide.
It should be, it should be, uh, yeah, universal collaboration, yes.
A couple of other random things, um, I think we, as a board, should review all board policies. I don't even think we know what they are or where they are.
Which is, sorry, for a second?
Policies that have been set over the last couple of decades.
Yeah.
Yeah, most of them are, are in the same section as the bylaws and town code and other things like that on the website.
Uh-huh.
Um, but we should just comprehensive, review board policies.
Sorry.
Yeah. And that should just be every, you know, normal course of action, every few years, all the policies should get a quick review.
Maybe along that, like a code of conduct.
Ah, that was, and also on my list. That was, wait, that wasn't my other one, but where was, I had that on here, is, yeah, oh, I had an arrow next, it was under all the financial stuff, so yes. Committee, committee member code of conduct, so Maya, who is our, yeah, our insurance company for the town has a recommended code of conduct for boards and committees.
I like that.
And some towns adopt it verbatim, some will, you know, customize it. Um, I think it is a good idea for us to review that, and then all boards, at least all boards and committees under us.
Right.
Um, would have to, um, abide by that code of con- and it's, 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 it's the kind of thing that makes sense. You read it, like, yeah, of course, everybody's gonna do that, but it's good to get it in writing.
I agree with that, I think you should do that.
Yeah.
With that training program and stuff like that, new people coming on as well, I mean, that's, I think it's something that should be, not just that we oversee, I mean, there should be some way we can get it to, you know, all the boards and committees.
Yeah, I mean, there are some we don't have authority over, the planning board and the school committees primarily, um, they would, they would have to, they, we would ask them to adopt it themselves.
Yes, okay, that's, that's.
And, and again, the school committee is kind of off in its own little world, they ha- they have comprehensive policies, um, that they, it might not make any sense for them to review the Maya policy, but the planning board probably does.
But the moderator points.
Mm-hmm.
Moderator should also be part of that and agree to that.
Yeah, agreed, and then the other, sorry, the other one that I had is, um, uh, take a look at our appointment process. You know, a few years ago, um, before, I think Julianne, you were the only member, um, on, is the board updated its policies on how to do the interviews and appointments, I, I think, you know, taking another look at, at that process and the interview process would make some sense.
So, so on that, on part of that note, I had review and revise current committee slash commission structure, consider consolidation or elimination of existing uh, committees or commissions that are no longer used, and get, take, take those off the ranks. Um, and of course, there's, um, recu- recruit new committee and commission volunteers that have reflected all segment of Northborough's citizenry, ensure that all volunteers are acknowledged for their willingness to serve.
So, this is just miscellaneous?
I really don't have, I think we're just trying to get everything else, so is there another category you wanted to put?
No, no, this would definitely be miscellaneous, I would.
Maybe in the board organization?
I, we can assign categories later, I just wanna, I wanna make sure that before we leave tonight, all of our ideas are reflected somewhere.
Oh, well, and I have to say, when we go back to the fact of, of the buildings and such, so that we had, we had put money aside for the roof at Procter, we have put, uh, an order aside for the fire, uh, the police station to be painted.
Mm-hmm.
There's a timeframe of when that, the expectation of that was going to happen, and now it's, seems to go, it's going away into, we don't know.
Yeah, I think that falls, falls into getting updates on prior approved projects.
Yeah. Yeah, and I mean, I think that's important that we actually start moving on that, because, again, first it was supposed to be the fall, now it's supposed to be the spring. What's holding?
So, this is, this is a brand-new topic, kind of, um, I would like to learn more about ranked choice voting.
Is that called our education? Okay, or miscellaneous?
Are other towns doing it, is that a?
Other towns are, I, I know, I know Cambridge does some form of it, I think Maine has adopted it as a statewide thing.
On, on a municipal level?
Alaska.
Do they do it on a town level?
Australia, I think, does it, but, I, and I'm not saying I'm for it, but I think we have to start to begin to educate ourselves on it because especially, I think it's especially relevant in municipal, um, elections.
Yeah.
It's a neat idea, yeah, I think it's, I think it's worth, worth looking at.
I agree.
Yeah.
Under, under sustainability and resilience, sustainable management of energy resources, reduction of carbon emissions and regeneration of our natural environment, probably goes under one of the things we did. Green, maybe that's under the green, do you want me to say it slowly?
Yeah, sorry, reduce carbon footprint. Would that cover all of those?
Uh, well, sustainable management of energy resources.
Sorry, so, let's say that one for.
Do you want me to say?
The first part you said?
Sustainable management of energy resources.
Okay.
And then reduction of carbon emissions.
Got it?
And regeneration of our natural environment. That, it falls into planting trees that are cut and putting trees in now that have died and that sort of thing. And, and what we haven't talked about. Um, the infrastructure, did we talk about infrastructure?
I think it's kind of popped up in a variety of places, um, is there something in particular?
Um, well, the, the, you know, we want it sufficient and sustainable, well-maintained, which it hasn't been so well-maintained, um, I think that's kind of important, it's been kind of left, the infrastructure's kind of been left to.
What do you mean, the infrastructure, like that's a big word, that means a lot of things.
Well, working into the green, the greens and, you know, having grass and having to manage grass and having to manage the trees and all that sort of thing. It, it seems like, like as you drive through town now, what used to always be taken care of, so you'd have the green strip by the sidewalk.
Maintenance?
Yeah, probably, yeah, town maintenance, town maintenance of, of more than just like one spot here and one spot there. There should be like a, should be general, uh, on the streets that have always had, you know, the machine that we bought that, that brings this blade up on the side and it cuts all that down, this year, I don't know if they've used it, because there's an awful lot of growth on so many of the roads that hasn't been trimmed back. I mean, even going down Lyman Street to Westboro used to always be done, I've seen it. And now, uh, you know, Ridge Road doesn't, wasn't done this year, a lot, a portion of Maple Street hasn't been done, um, you know, there's, there's areas that just, the grass is this high, that, that's several weeks.
Well, this would, this would, I think, fall under when we, when we talk to department heads and, and kind of understand their schedule and.
And also, this summer has been particularly crazy with so much heat and so much rain.
Yeah.
So, that might have messed up their schedule, honestly, I know Mylawn was a total disaster until yesterday.
Yeah, it just seems that there's some places that are, you know, that are repetitively cleaned, such as Ellsworth McAfee is beautiful.
Okay.
But, but other areas that are just, just, it's almost like everybody went on vacation down the Cape, nobody was here to fix it.
Yeah, I, I, I think there's just been an extraordinary rate amount of growth, I mean, I've seen the same thing, the weeds at my house are impressive.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, so Lisa, I put it down as townwide maintenance of roadways and sidewalks, does that cover it?
Yeah, I think that would cover it.
And also, actually, should we just put sidewalks?
Yes.
I mean, honestly, if ninety-five percent of Northborough was sitting here right now, they would all be saying, why haven't you said sidewalks yet?
Yeah, we've said complete streets pretty early and that, within that to some extent.
Right. Said complete streets, but not everybody knows what that means.
Right.
Are thinking about sidewalks, cause it means that there's two and it's a grant.
Um, Laura, under miscellaneous.
Can you?
Under miscellaneous, do, do we wanna understand more about where, how the town has, how, how we're addressing cybersecurity and?
Yes, that was on my list.
Yeah, cause towns are getting hacked and then they're paying, uh.
Right, right, do we, then there's insurance for that or there's, yeah, that's something we really should, if we have it.
Yeah, I think that's, that, yeah, I, the town is very, very aware of those things, and I, I believe in this most recent year's budget, there was some additional money for some of those things.
We need to make sure that they are funded to the.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think looking at that makes a lot of sense, we have to do that in a careful way, um, so that we don't publicize exactly what we're doing and how.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And this is, this is off, off, any of the things we've talked about so far is the historic and cultural heritage, cause there's thing, you know, things in town that.
Like maintain?
Um, it, historic.
Enhance.
Yeah, well, preservation and promotion of historic and cultural heritage. Cause there, there's a lot of history in Northborough, which is crazy.
That's not really a select board goal, that's a historical society goal, we can, we can support them.
Yeah, but it's just kind of an overview of, of the importance, I mean, we're looking at how the town looks and everything, the importance of that, because we've never had a historic district.
We do have historic districts, that's right, where Mitch lives, I think.
Is that right, we have a historic area?
It is, oh, we have a couple of historic districts, my house is not within one because. My house is not within one because my house is a reconstruction, but if you if you look at it, it kind of circles around my house. So so First Parish Church, um, and then the streets, the both sides of the road going going up after the new houses next to mine and and across the street, those older homes going up towards the cemetery, um, sort of historic district and then the going just a little bit further up, the um, I don't want to say the last name of the people, we know we know somebody that lives there, um, their house is a district also, separate from that.
The house itself is.
Yeah, yeah, there are there are a number of homes that are.
So there's a few individuals.
Yeah, and and the expectation is White Cliffs would be in a historic district once that process moves along with whatever we choose to do there.
Right, because I know when I lived in Westboro, I lived on Church Street, and we all had our little our little house built and such and such and proudly proudly put that on your building.
Mm-hmm.
And um, and it'd be nice to have, you know, a certain section of downtown going to that point.
It'd be nice to have it posted.
Yeah, there are there are some signs, um, Meeting House Historic District, there's a sign right near my house because that's the name of
Ah.
That, the original town meeting house, the original town hall, original high school right across the street from my house.
Wow.
Long, long time before me.
My, I know, just the other one that I wanted to add that doesn't really have a category is just awareness around the housing prices in the entire state. Can I put that one in here, just there's no easy solution, just to be aware of, or is that not a goal?
Yeah, no, I, housing affordability.
I think the housing affordability, especially for young people moving back and seniors that want to downsize.
Yeah, both both of those are huge categories that, um.
That was the last one on my list.
Yeah, that's a, that's a big one. One more when you're done with that, since ranked choice voting was brought up, I have a companion item to that, which is allowing sixteen and seventeen year olds to vote in municipal elections.
Ah, yeah, idea.
The state is not allowing any towns to do that yet. A number of towns have passed local bylaws allowing, including Shrews, uh, not Shrewsbury, yeah, Southborough, passed one for seventeen year olds just this past year, but the legislature thus far has not approved any towns' requests to do that. If we as a town want to do that, we can still get that on the books and that would be added weight to the legislature to allowing it, I think it's a pretty neat idea um, to to allow sixteen and seventeen year olds to vote only in municipal elections, it wouldn't impact statewide elections.
So actually, so I have one more to piggyback on that.
Okay.
Um, so remember last year I went to um.
Peaslee?
Peaslee and spoke.
The candy boat?
Mrs. Donae's class. It was so fun, but also, and I'm a kid person, so I don't know, I feel like Laura's also a kid person, but I feel like we all could do this in different places, drum up support, get people into town meeting.
Yeah.
Um, if you do it right before town meeting and if we're considering, you know, putting that on a town ballot, so if the state does change its mind, we can have high school kids voting, we need to get into the high school and tell them what we do and um, why it's important for them to pay attention, which they don't like to do because they're high school kids and they want to pay attention to other things, but it could be, it could be really interesting, I did go to the high school actually last year and I spoke to the DECA kids. Um, and I said, isn't this a business group, and they were like, ah, leaders of any kind, so they had some great questions for me and that was just that group of kids, but still, I do think there is a place for us in all the schools in town and between the five of us, we could um drum up interest in things and volunteers and support that town meeting.
That's the next thing, because we did have our last volunteer signup night day, a young lady that was high school who was interested in in signing up and fabulous, and I'd like to and I'd like to get more of that, even if it was an alternate or somebody who was there to to at least learn some of the civic part of it or the so what, and you were talking to her about age, age limitations.
Yeah, so so state law and town bylaws don't provide, don't have age limitations on most boards and committees.
Okay.
So, um, cultural council is is one that a lot of communities appoint, uh, sixteen and seventeen year olds. I mean, in theory, I've seen one fourteen year old serve on a a cultural council, and it's totally legal, totally fine, the state encourages that. Some boards and committees, it might make less sense, you know, I don't know if I'd support that on appropriations, for example. But there are there are others that sixteen and seventeen year olds can and should apply for, I think that's fine. Something that we may want to consider at some point is asking a student to be a sort of a student member of the select board. Um, I have seen that done on school committees, I've never seen that done on select boards, but there's no reason it can't be done and that would be a non-voting member who would, you know, uh, participate and attend all the meetings. And um, I I thought about this because there's a high school student that's very bright and and very interested in local government that I've spoken to a couple of times that I have I have in mind. But but it could be anybody, I, you know.
It's a great, I think it's a great idea, it's a great opportunity for them.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, we had a we had a group of high school students five years ago now, maybe before that were very interested in the vote and very interested in getting people out and they had their own little Facebook page and they did all of that and I and that helps with that that age group that.
It helps to get people to town meeting and a lot of them, a lot of the seniors are eighteen, so they can vote.
Yeah.
Yeah. So can you write that down, like um, like reach out to community?
Oh, yes.
Reach out to the community via the schools. Is that, I mean, the those are the places where there is the most people with the most things on the line because you're voting on the whole school committee budget and everything. And a lot of them are just busy, hairy parents and they don't come. I know, because I used to be one of them. Far I have come.
Look at us now.
Kind of, right?
So, um, in in my old town, we did for a very long time, like a town government week uh, conjunction with the school, it was a really big initiative.
Yeah.
Um, I didn't create it, I grew into it when I when I joined the select board there. Was an active participant and it was a a week where the high school government classes focused, but but all school, all the whole school was involved to some extent and members of department heads and boards and committee members would go in and speak to different classes, focused on that week, they would invite in state rep and state senator to speak and it culminated on Friday of a town government fair. It was like a trade show with boards and committees and departments represented in the gym and each class would go through and you'd you'd come up with some way to engage them, like a a quiz or a a fair or something like that.
It's such a nice idea, it's a lot of work.
It it is a lot, it is a lot of work and that's that was that's my hesitation on it.
But that, but there are other things we can do.
Yeah.
There's, you know, like, we could each try and find a teacher who would let us come into their class to talk about
Yeah.
because they all teach, well, a lot of them teach some kind of government, like Mrs. Donae just piggybacked on, well, we're doing government, um, and, you know, my kids had her for fifth grade, so she just got in touch with me and said, we're doing, you know, a very brief unit on local government after we just did our federal and state government, but would you come in and it, the kids, they they knew so much already, they knew so much already, so.
So.
Put it on the list.
And so I'm thinking of one one other thing too, that I don't know what category it would go in, but I have actually now, I was lucky enough, Julianne was with me, to tour the fire station that they live in now and meet the men who work there, uh, and lady. And you and it it was nice to be able to say, you know, I recognize you, you recognize me, we all work together here. I got a tour of the police station, um, and and that was very beneficial.
Yeah.
Uh, and I think they realized too that now we're interested in what you need and and how we can facilitate maybe some of that, not, you know, not have this what do you call it, silos, you know, this is that silo and this silo and that silo. I asked why, why we have, we have the police that used to come before us that we were introduced to that would come on. Remember we talked about that?
When we appoint.
Yeah, we, I guess we appoint police officers, but we don't appoint fire.
Well, we do the official like.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, welcome, whatever, whatever you might call that, but I think we should do the same thing with the firemen, don't you? I mean, I know they they're already there in house and they'll do everything there, but it was nice to be able to recognize their coming on board and becoming a part of the community and.
That would fall more into the category of meeting new employees.
Yeah, like have inviting them to a meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just so we can say hello, but yeah, I do I do enjoy um having the new police officers come in and then when I see them on the road, when I'm driving by them, I'm always thinking like, I don't know if I've met you, but I'm gonna wave because you all look really young and you all have the same outfit on, I mean, I don't know who's who.
But again, I think that that sense of team, that sense of community, I think is is what we have to look forward to.
No, it's nice, I love that, I do love that.
And I think they enjoyed it too, I mean, it's it's much nicer to say, oh, wow, I recognize you, recognize some of the, you know, people that are working here.
Yeah, and I had, funnily enough, a um, a smoke alarm situation at my house where they just went off and there was no fire, I checked. And they just wouldn't go off, they wouldn't turn off, they just went off for no reason and then they wouldn't go, and they're all wired together. So the guys, so I called the fire department and I got Lorraine on the phone, the, you know, the 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 chief's like admin assistant, no, she's not just, she's, she just, it, she kind of runs the fire station, she's like, and she, uh, I was like, what do I do, and she's like, I'll have some guys come over. I was like, I hope they're not busy because my house is not on fire. Anyway, the guys who came over, I was like, I know you, and they're like, we know you, and I'm like, I'm really sorry to bother you. Anyway, I needed all new fire alarms.
Yeah, because after ten years.
I worked with an extremely similar situation.
Yes, yes, it's very embarrassing when you don't know why and then that's why you're just.
Yeah, mine, we're yelling carbon monoxide.
Oh, God, also scary.
Yeah, and it was no carbon monoxide, I checked and they verified, but like, all right, let's just order all these smoke detectors, all right, but they were great. Uh, anyway, um, it's ten oh one, uh, does anyone else have anything that we want to put on the board now? Again, we're not finalizing anything tonight, so we have the opportunity to add later, we will absolutely be organizing this a lot.
And fine tuning and refining.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I think I think it's a great start.
This is a great start.
So what I'm happy to do is Julianne, or whoever, I'm happy to take pictures of these and transcribe them and then share them. And then if somebody wants to categorize them, especially the miscellaneous ones that have been put up, and then, does that work?
Sure.
Does that work?
Yes, and and when you transcribe it, send it to me so I can, you know, make sure my minutes are.
Organize it?
Yeah, Julianne has volunteered to take minutes for this, so.
Okay, so I will share with you the list that we've come up with and then I'll just defer to you on any reorganization of categories and if I made mistakes somewhere, things went, that's entirely possible too. Especially with our rapid fire round.
I think it was a great start.
Yeah.
It's good.
Yeah. I really appreciate it.
Uh, that was from Gibb, we dropped those off when we were in recess. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go on.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 We adjourned, ten oh three P M, thanks very much, everybody, good night, everyone.
She said inflation contributed to some of those higher costs. She quickly admits though that she and her daughter personalized.